So I'd like to ask Greg, Jeff, and Brian Keller and Sharon Dudley to come up and stand with the Superintendent and Chair Tim Chou. The Keller brothers, Greg, Jeff, and Brian Keller, and sister Sharon Dudley have generously stepped forward to pay $4,200 of the unpaid meal balance for Barnes Elementary School. They attended Barnes in the 1960s and 70s, and their goal is to bring awareness to this financial issue and to encourage others to help other schools and the Nutrition Services Department. The NS Nutrition Services Department is an enterprise business in the Beaverton School District, meaning they receive no funds from the General Fund. Greg fondly recalls how he and his brothers and sister helped in the Barnes School cafeteria washing dishes so they could earn a free meal. They came from a single-parent household. They understand very personally the challenges some of our most vulnerable students face. We thank the Keller family for making this very generous donation to pay a large portion of the Barnes Elementary unpaid meal balance. Thank you.
I'm trying to hear it now, boys, so I'm not going to get in front of the microphone and sit down and look at you all. It's kind of ironic. I was here seven years ago. I was talking to a couple people seven years ago asking for something from the school board, and I didn't get it. But today, we're here to say, just to give back and maybe inspire some others to maybe step forward and pay it forward. You know, there's a lot of craziness out there in the world right now, but here, we've got to come together and maybe make a difference. Maybe impact some kids, some families that maybe wouldn't otherwise get to have lunch every day at school. And I know how important it was, and I think a lot of us, especially, you know, older folks like us, take it for granted a little bit. So hopefully, get some other people to step forward and pay it forward. And I think there's one person that was kind of forgotten to be mentioned in all this, and I'll say my mom, Joan. We were raised by our mom from the time I was six years old. So my first year, my first grade year in Barnes Elementary, 1966. From then on, she's put out a pretty damn good job, and I think turned us into pretty good people. I think we raised some pretty good kids ourselves. So I just want to say thank you. I love you. Thank you. It's an amazing community. I experienced that full force seven years ago. There's a lot of amazing people in this room. There's a lot of amazing people in this community. You know, I heard a bunch of you say it's a packed house tonight. Usually, that's not a good thing at school board meetings. So let's find a way for all you guys to work together. Let's get stuff done because it's for the kids. It's not for us sitting here in the room. So thank you, guys. Thank you.
At this time, do work members have any changes to the agenda? All right, close the scan. First up is Representative President of BEA, Sarah Schmidt. And after that, we'll have Diana Hesse from OSEA.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent Grotting and members of the Board. I really appreciate the new seating arrangement. I know you may feel cramped, but it shows that people are welcome in this room. I think a packed house really shows that people care, so I appreciate you being flexible and responsive with the room. I want to start tonight by thanking all of the BEA and OSEA members, parents, students, administrators, and committee members who put on a red shirt, carried a sign, wrote to a legislator, and elevated the crisis of underfunding in Oregon schools during the last school year. Oregon schools during the last school year. The Student Success Act passed and wasn't referred to the ballot because we created an army to fight for our students, and we weren't going to back down. And we have extra funds to invest for next year because of that effort. So I know you haven't heard the presentation about the SIA plan, but I'm going to talk a little bit about it. Hopefully, there are no spoilers. If you were to ask me in August why I thought about our student investment account process or what the proposal would look like, I would not have been able to envision what has been accomplished or the plan that you'll be voting on tonight. It's been difficult because $32 million does not go a very long way when we have such a great need and a huge deficit. However, I believe what's being put forward to you today is a huge step in the right direction. To truly achieve equity and educational justice, we need to look at the system that produces the current outcomes. Our system is currently producing outcomes that are predictable by race, socioeconomic status, English language proficiency, and ability. One of the most impactful steps in the engagement process that we have done this year was the convening of expert groups to figure out why. These groups spent hours examining the root causes of disparities in academic achievement for our students of color, students with disabilities, students in poverty, and why we aren't adequately addressing our students' behavioral and mental health challenges. I hope that you'll take some time to review the notes from those readings which are in the packet of evidence. There's a lot of pages, but please make sure that you look for that. It's really helpful to see. And I think this should guide the district's work beyond the SIA process. In addition, I think you'll see that many of the investments in the plan were chosen to address those root causes that were identified by this work. So as educators, we're always learning and looking for teachable moments, and we practice using a growth mindset. As such, there are three areas related to the SIA process and proposal that I encourage you to focus on as we move forward. Class size reductions, well-rounded education, and authentic community engagement. So lowering class sizes is a huge priority of our members who are charged with building relationships with students, providing differentiated instruction, and caring for the academic, social, and emotional growth of students. We will continue to push for real class size and case load reductions so that students can receive the individual attention they deserve. Well-rounded education. We're well past the days of no child left behind, and standardized test scores in reading, writing, and math should not be the sole drivers of decision-making. The data shows that our students, parents, and community want more access to the arts, oral languages, science, history, civics, personal finance, CTE, and culturally sustaining curriculum. Though not reflected in the SIA plan, this feedback shouldn't be ignored. I'm hopeful that the district will be able to increase access to electives through general fund investments, high school course offerings, middle school scheduling, and placing a high value on educating our whole child. And lastly, authentic community engagement. The process over the last few months has revealed two things. Our community members have ideas about how our schools could provide a better experience for all students, and they want to have a voice in decision-making. We have a wonderful opportunity to use this process as the first step towards a future where community engagement is proactive, not reactive, authentic, not transactional, and strengths-based, not deficit-based. So it's been clear since September that the SIA process would be a tight timeline, and districts were being asked to create a plan as the rules were being made up. I'm impressed with the quick progress that was made in seeking out voices that aren't often heard, keeping the focus on the big picture rather than pet projects, and holding our historically marginalized populations at the center of this work. I'm hopeful that this is the start of a new era for our school district where we don't just talk about equity, but we mean it, we live it, and we work together for racial, social, and educational justice for every student in the Beaverton School District. Thanks.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Grotting. It is my pleasure to present each of you with a reusable shopping bag from OSEA Chapter 48. As you know, last week was Classified Appreciation Week throughout the state, and this is how our executive board decided to celebrate our members, by giving them something that's good for our community. We appreciate all the kind words throughout the week from different administrators and Superintendent Grotting. And with working with different administrators during our Contract Bargaining sessions, they've been very productive. We look forward to our next session, which is this Friday. And this being our last year with Sue Robertson is bittersweet, as she is such a key part of bargaining, and we appreciate Sue very much. In following the Strategic Investment Account Draft, we are most excited about all of the work that's been done that will support all of our students, especially those that will be filled by classified staff. Whether it's extended-day opportunities for middle schools, targeting academics, language, culturally specific activities and support, increased before-or-after-school targeted instruction time based on current middle school academics and the SACA program using classified engagement specialists, or the planned equity training to provide anti-racist training to every employee in the district that has classified staff looking forward to this, as every training that we participate in makes us better employees and people. But we're most excited about the mental health and behavioral health increases, particularly the behavioral health paraeducators that are slated for the secondary schools to implement behavior support, planned interventions, monitor wellness centers, and provide point-and-time instruction to students. This is very exciting, whether our current employees apply and fill some of these new positions or we're bringing a new classified staff to fill these. It's a chance to become a part of a brand-new team, helping support our students' emotional and behavioral health in a new way. We appreciate all of what the district is moving forward with, and thanks to the success, Student Success Act, sorry. And again, thank you for the support and appreciation shown to classified staff last week.
We thank you, folks, for being here tonight, and I've awaited, I was like, we cannot run our schools without your dedicated service. So thank you so much for all that you do for our students. Thank you. At this time, we're going to start our public participation. If you would like to make some public comments this evening, there are yellow cards out in the hallway, and we will have Vice Chair Simpson call the first name and then who's up next so you can start moving forward. You will have two minutes. You will see a clock up behind you, and we'd really like you to keep to two minutes. And if I see you're getting close, I'm going to kind of ask you to wrap it up if you could so we can get everyone in. And no one will be answering your questions tonight. We'll get back to you in a later time. And this is not a time to bring up any specific personnel or anything that's going on specifically in our schools. This is more of a time. So we ask that you not name any staff here this evening. And then in the middle of our, meaning we will be having a public testimony on the Student Investment Act, and those were the bright green cards, so that we will be doing in the middle of our agenda when we talk about the Student Investment Act. So if you would like to make comments tonight, there are yellow cards, and then you can hand them over here to Barry or Debbie at the end of the... So with that, we will start off with Vice Chair Simpson.
All right. We have Betsy Thornwood, followed by Exa Williams.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Thornwood. I'm a teacher at Sunset High School. And I'm here today to address the lack of equity and diversity in our district's hiring practices. While I realize that the SIA that will be discussed much later this evening makes some attempts to address this issue, namely with the hiring of administrators, it is my desire to encourage the Board to take a direct stand and make a clear commitment to the hiring of diverse persons at all levels of our district, but especially in our schools and classrooms. To cite all the studies that show the importance that educators of color have for students of color would take more than my two minutes. To explain the research detailing the impact that these educators have on student self-esteem, achievement, engagement would take more than my two minutes. Representation matters. Furthermore, it is clear through the Board's own existing policies regarding equity, as well as the administrative positions being created by the SIA funds, that the school district and school board know that representation matters as well. So when does the proverbial rubber hit the road? The Board's equity policies were adopted in 2011. How long will we pass policies and hire administrators without directly addressing the lack of representation in our classrooms and in our district leadership? How long will we realize that our students have a need but refuse to address it? In just a few moments, you will hear from a student regarding the impact that an educator who looked like them might have had on their educational career. But I want to leave you with a request. Our district puts a lot of emphasis on specific, data-based, measurable outcomes. Please consider including language, which would allow our district to measure the impact of the new administrative positions being put into place via the SIA funds. Please study the impact of the school board policies, GBA and JBB, on actual hiring practices as they exist today. While this might not be the year that the hiring windfall we all hoped for happens, hiring will happen. So let it happen with the knowledge that Beaverton is one of the most linguistically diverse districts in our state, with over 85 home languages spoken by our families, and that we are quickly becoming a majority-minority student population. Let's make sure the adults reflect the student populations they're serving. Thank you.
Exa Williams, followed by Leia.
Hello. Okay, that's work. My name is Exa Williams, and I'm a junior at Sunset High School. I came from a Mormon slash German mother, and my paternal side is African-American. Recently, I moved from Arizona to Oregon, and what was once a small internal struggle to belong in Arizona has now been amplified with this move. To have a teacher that looks like me would be to know I'm normal. To have a teacher that looks like me would let me know that I don't need to be a Princess Tiana or a Michelle Obama to be unapologetically me or unapologetically smart. To have a teacher that looks like me would give me the chance to form relationships with my teachers on topics that we both truly understand because we both have faced it. At my school, there is an issue with visibility and diversity. I hear racist comments as I walk through the halls, and I hear ignorant statements in every class I go. To have a teacher that looks like me would let me know that even throughout all the pain, all the suffering that my culture and my family faces, I have someone to confide in, and I have someone that I can trust to believe in me and push me to where I need to be. The role models that I've had in my life, the personal role models that I've had in my life, were all from white teachers that didn't ever truly understand the internal struggle I constantly faced being a mixed kid growing up in a white country. My aunt and my uncles on my dad's side all lived in a impoverished nation, and they struggled so much that their, sorry, that the roles that they gave me were not ones that I should look up to. They were not responsible roles that I needed to have to go further in my life. To have someone that looked like me would give me the opportunity to see someone who's successful without being famous, without being a star figure. Because the first person I saw that looked like me on the screens was Princess Tiana. The second was Queen Madea from "Madea's Christmas," who was a ratchet black stereotype. That's not who I want to be, and that's not who our society should base all of our leaders on. Thank you.
And Leia, followed by Deena Schreiner.
Hello, my name is Laia Agi, and I'm here to represent the BBC. So when I go to school, I'm a student. I'm not an educator. It is not my job to tell your teachers how to teach the black experience. It is not my job to tell your teachers what racism means to me. It's not my job to let all my teachers, my peers, know what it means to be a black girl in my school. So when you tell, so when a teacher comes up to me after school asking me, "So, Laia, what's it like to be a black student at APLA?" How am I supposed to answer that? That's not my job. Our schools don't have any education for teachers, or if they do have any, it's not enough for them to know how to handle any subjects on race, ethnicity, or like, even sleep. They don't know how to talk about it. And by doing so, they go to their students who don't go there to educate their teachers on what it means to be black. That's not my job. I'm not an educator. In doing so, it's, sorry, oh. It feels almost disrespectful to put students in this position where they somehow now have the responsibility of teaching their teachers how to teach black students and how to appropriately have conversations with, they don't even know for themselves. When they don't, they haven't really figured out what it means to be black. They haven't figured out what it means to be themselves yet. But you're putting all this pressure on students that they don't deserve. And so I urge you to get your teachers the education they need to teach black students or just teach students of minorities in general because without that education, they are failing their students. Without that education, Beaverton School District is failing every single student of minority that goes to school every day. Thank you.
Deena Schreiner, followed by Sandeep Kumar.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deena Schreiner, and I'm a licensed clinical social worker in the Beaverton School District. I have been in my industry for 13 years, and I would like to share with you some information about what it means to be a social worker and how it can fit into the academic setting. Sadly, the media and misinformation in our community has made the title "social worker" a title that has some negative connotations. Frequently, a social worker is confused with a DHS case manager and the child welfare system. While there are staff at DHS who are social workers, this is not a requirement of a DHS child welfare worker, and "social worker," the term, is a protected title that requires one to obtain a master's degree in social work. Social workers are trained in a generalist practice, which means that we can go into a medical, political, schools, VA, hospice, or even government jobs. We are prepared to bridge the gap between families, community resources, and systems that they intersect with. Frequently, we are trained in evidence-based practices that help us work alongside families in a very meaningful way. A strong component of social work is the flexibility to meet individuals where they are at. This phrase, "meeting people where they are at," has a double meaning. It can mean that physically, we meet people in their homes, at jobs during their lunch breaks, or even up the street at our domestic violence resource center, the Family Justice Center. It can also mean reflectively listening to a person's story to pick up on subtle messages that are dropped throughout conversation to identify if we need to slow down and change our goals to match where the individual is at in their personal process to help them achieve their maximum potential. I would love to open up this dialogue and answer any questions about social workers as I am very excited that BSD is making this investment. Thank you.
We have Sandeep, followed by Tashiyo.
Hi, everyone. So my name is Sandeep Kumar, and I'm here as a Springville parent. And I'm here to talk on the middle school boundary process. First of all, I'd like to thank you, everyone, for all of your hard work and time. So we just got a meeting packet today for the meeting that is going to happen on Thursday, March 12. And we see new data that has came for the projection number for Springville community. And we are really thankful for BSD fixing the error that was there in that data. We were actively working hard in the background because we were not sure how or where that projection came from because our community, all the construction in our community is almost done, so we were actively posting all the comments. So we are really thankful to BSD that they fixed that error, and the number looks really good. And we are glad it looks like we'll have some good progress on the map. I also like to add that we already have eight to nine meetings for middle school boundary process. And most of the time, the discussion is around SUMA program, which have only five to six percent kids in the district. The rest, 95% of kids are in the regular program. But most of the time, we, the committee discusses about SUMA program. I think we need a proper guideline so that we can, the meeting, those meetings have more time spent on discussing about regular program kids so that we can make progress on that. Thank you. Thanks.
I have some handles.
Tashiyo, followed by Lysa Dres.
So I was here back in the boundary measure for the high schools. And what I was really hoping for is that we would be able to give John Hellscamp an award before the boundary measure changed for his work with the socioeconomic disadvantaged students. He had one of the highest graduation rates at Sunset High School. And I'm not sure if anyone knows if I can get an answer if that actually happened. I tried to nominate that, keep that going many years ago. So now, I'm here asking for Cedar Park Middle School has one of the best mathematics rates for certain racial groups and socioeconomic groups in the state. And some of the data, I think that one of the staff here, I guess we don't want to call them, even if they're doing a great job. Got us some really great data on that, and it's really exciting. And so unfortunately, though, it's a real frustrating parallel. So I was coming here to talk about... So I was coming here to talk about the amazing thing that John Hellscamp was doing with the social economics disadvantaged students at Sunset High School, and then after that, he changed the boundary measure and moved a lot of those students out of that school. And, um, it was kind of sad, even Oregonians were rewarding Sunset High School for that. And so it's kind of frustrating that we have one of the wealthiest schools in the state that was created, and we moved the social economics disadvantaged students. And so my main goal coming here today is that we were given a presentation about, um, the new potential, um, it's the new schedules. There's a common schedule, um, system that's being asked to be out, and the real frustration here is that if we can trust our teachers and trust administrators, which we have for many years, to allow them to have their own schedules, okay? And we can give them goals, but not mandates, to force them to have all the same schedule. And so on this right here is one of the surveys that was given. Here had very, not misleading, but incomplete information. And so can we please show the total amount of time a student will be in math and science for the year when we show information to them?
We appreciate tonight. If you want to send us an email for rest, that'd be great.
Okay.
And for next folks coming up, it'd be really helpful if you sat down at a microphone so that our recording secretary can get everything.
We have Elisa Bedras, followed by Colette Casinelli.
Hi again, Elisa Bedras, Raleigh Hills mom. Happy to speak into the microphone. Right now, I just want to reiterate what I've been saying for five or six months. Raleigh Hills community wants to keep the middle school. I understand Springville is overcrowded. Although Huber is able to keep their K-8, please keep the Raleigh Hills K-8. We have a strong community. Right now, we hear that the middle school comment experience is, I guess, pushed off for another year. The middle school boundaries are in flux. We need to rebuild Raleigh Hills, period, whether it's a K-5 or a K-8. So it's a lot of flux for kids, for teachers, for families. If they're gonna have to relocate the kids for a rebuild, we have to pass bond first, by the way, to enable that to happen. We are on, let's see, my daughter's in sixth grade, we're on our fourth principal. As she's going into her seventh year, we've had a lot of flux. I would love for our administration to have a chance to work with the staff, to work with the families, to have a successful option program in a K-8 school. I don't know what the plan is for the other options programs. I hear about the common middle school experience, it's not clear to me. The survey was really quick, and I'm just, again, please, keep the middle school option available at our school. Thank you.
Colette, followed by Campbell Stewart.
Hi, I'm Colette Casinelli. I'm a library and instructional technology teacher. This year, my job was split between Sunset High School and ACHA. So that's one LIT for over twenty-seven hundred students, and I'm only spending two and a half days at each school. So I'm here tonight to talk about two things: transparency and trust. For me, right now, there's very little transparency in the budget and decision-making process. You know, several people have assured me, "Oh, don't worry, the LIT position's only gonna be cut for one year." I don't know, maybe, maybe not. I've had no input in it. It's hard for me to trust the process when the district isn't actually supporting programs that are already in place. So the Future Ready Program started five years ago when the bond was passed, and we bought all the wonderful Chromebooks, and we hired the LIT leaders, and, you know, you asked us to work with students and teachers to implement this one-to-one learning process in the school. And I think we've done a pretty good job. I actually think we've done an excellent job. Actually, I think Beaverton, for a lot of ways, is recognized as a stellar community up until this point, up until this year, when we don't even have the personnel in those schools to fix the Chromebooks that are having problems. I hear you talk a lot about investing in your rainy day fund, and you're gonna hear a lot tonight about how people want to spend the Student Investment Act. Well, I want you to know what I invest my time in. I invest my time in with ninth graders. Today, I spent three hours working with sixty-five ninth graders, teaching them how to access and evaluate information from databases. I work with writing 121 and IB histories teachers on research papers, or how to create, with eighth graders over at ACHA, how to create graphic novels out of eBooks. I think you need to invest in the programs that you already have money and time and things that you put forward, the Chromebook Future Ready Program. So when you're hearing tonight about all the different ways that people want you to spend money, so I want you to trust us that we will make this a fabulous program, but we need to reinstate the LIT position full-time at the secondary schools.
Campbell Stewart, followed by Marco Montoya.
Good evening. My name is Campbell Stewart, and this is my fifth year serving in Beaverton School District. As one of the five district's school social workers currently serving eleven schools. In honor of School Social Worker Week last week and National Social Worker Month, we wanted to share a bit about who we are and the skills and supports we bring to our school. Did you know that social workers are the largest provider of mental health services in our nation? And that many states for years have supported and maintained robust social work programs in their schools. We are thrilled that the day has come to expand our program to better integrate ourselves into our school communities. As a profession, we value above all else the dignity and worth of all individuals. We strive to engage families and communities to gain deeper understanding, connection, and support that will ultimately help our students to thrive in school. Many in our community may have misconceptions about our profession that have been perpetuated for decades by false, unrealistic, and unfair portrayal of our work in film and media. Social workers study and understand family systems and the immeasurable value that family, culture, and community support play in a child's life. We strive to be creative, collaborative, transparent, supportive, and empower students and families to fulfill their own destiny. We come alongside families in some of their darkest times to meet them where they are at with compassion and support. We help to elevate their story to schools in a way that evokes care and curiosity rather than judgment and shame. We partner with our teachers, our school counselors, our school psychologists, and our administrative teams, and more, to better understand the unique needs of every student and how to best serve them. We value a multidisciplinary and culturally responsive approach to solving some really difficult challenges that our students are facing today. We know that no one profession can meet these challenges alone, and we are eager to see our profession grow in BSD schools and our larger community. Thank you for your time.
Marco Montoya, followed by Nadia San.
Good evening. My name is Marco Peralta Montoya, and I'm a senior at Westview. I'm here tonight to express my concern about the implementation of a new integrated EOD instructional model at the secondary level. I've spoken with many teachers and other district staff members that strongly feel that the new model was not the way to best serve our students. EOD students account for at least ten percent of our students in our vulnerable population because they do not have the language skills nor the know-how to advocate for themselves. Having moved here from Mexico at the age of nine, I have firsthand experience as an EOD student. Having been a tutor of seven peers in middle school, I have firsthand experience of how difficult it can be to help teach content in class, even with the advantage of being able to communicate with my peers in Spanish. I feel that the elimination of pull-out classes in favor of a pro-teaching model at the secondary level will make it even more difficult for EOD students to succeed. I know that there has been a study made by, would be by Beaverton School District in coordination with Education Northwest, and I found that the Education Northwest could make no conclusions about the integrated, the integrated models in grade six to twelve. So I, it especially concerns me about how the district is still going through with the, with the, um, the elimination of the pull-out model in secondary schools. So therefore, I would like to know more about the motives and the rationale behind the district's decisions to implement this model, and how it would impact the funding that the EOD program will receive in the future. Thank you.
Nadia Hassan, followed by Jamie Williams.
Okay, hi. Hello. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the assignment because I gotta get home to kiddos. Um, first of all, in light humor, my son would like single desks with cup holders in the classroom. You guys can help out with that. That's how I got out of the time right now to be here. Onto business. I want to share that I appreciate that the district took some of the feedback we suggested in the current plan after we presented our, uh, concerns with the original plan. I am cautiously optimistic with the addition of staff that will focus specifically on equity practices. These were clearly a direct result of engagement with the Beaverton Families for Equity and the Beaverton Black Parent Union. There are four areas specifically I want to call your attention to. The first one is intentional anti-bias training. I'm excited to see the equity training, but a ten-year implementation concerns me. As I've shared with your leadership, there must be specific messages to all staff within the district on a regular basis about equity, how it works in our district, and the importance of its focus in every single decision. My school district, my school experience from one elementary to another should not be different, but the same. Addition of staff. I want to encourage you to recruit and hire strategically. I did skim the one-hundred-page document and was struck by how many of our multilingual communities feel scared, unwelcome, or unsafe in our schools. Tier-two funding. I feel that some of the areas in tier-two do not reflect the needs of our most vulnerable populations. I encourage you to read the full report and see what communities set with the focus of our multilingual and diverse communities. Lastly, I want to ensure that there's appropriate oversight in how this money is spent. How can the community continue to stay engaged in this process? What bridges can we build to continue to help our kids to be successful? I hope that this experience, engaging with the community, has opened the door for constant conversations, and I hope that it will not stop there. Thank you.
Jamie Williams, followed by Mary Miller.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Williams. I don't have anything prepared. I'm a Rock Creek parent. I'm also, uh, here to discuss the boundary adjustment process. Met with Ann recently. She came to our school. Very thankful for that. Just wanted to comment on the kind of division in our community in the Bethany area now. And I think that we should probably rethink this process for, for the next time. I don't really have any, like, um, strong words of criticism. I just think that maybe we should, um, kind of take a step back and, uh, learn from this process that began with community mapping, which immediately was everybody kind of against each other. And then introduction of very helpful maps throughout the process from BSD, but, um, maybe some of those, maybe not directly at the beginning, but could have been presented, um, at the beginning to kind of help guide both the community and also, um, the committee who's, uh, seems sometimes not very focused during those meetings to kind of go in the, the right direction. Then also possibly discuss what, uh, the goals are. Kind of going from walkability, um, to busing, things that are not necessarily stated in the objectives. And then we discuss the, the irregularities with the data, which has led to confusion on the committee, including discussion of whether or not SUMA should be considered, which is fine for it to be considered one way or the other, but I, I think even to this day, that committee that's gonna meet on Thursday doesn't know, um, whether or not they should be considering that. So then lastly, my last ten seconds, I think we should probably try to control the disruption. If you guys watch those videos, it's very disruptive and stops the committee, and, um, that's it. Thank you.
Mary Miller, followed by Rik Chakrabarti.
Hello, Superintendent Grodding, administrators, and board members. My name is Mary Miller. I'm an Oak Hills Meadow Park Westview parent and have had kids in the district for thirteen years now. I'm speaking this evening as an Oak Hills community member with some concerns about the middle school boundary process similar to the previous gentleman. But also, since tonight is all about Student Investment Act, I have a couple of quick thoughts. There are a lot of details in a proposal to spend thirty-two million dollars. My ask is that board members only vote if they've read the proposal, line item by line item. The proposal includes diversity and equity administrative blow that will focus on judging people by the color of their skin rather than the content of their character. It also includes creating a position for a community organizer, an activist position that is more political than educational. Please only vote if you've read the details. Now back to the middle school boundary topic. I attended a boundary committee meeting a few weeks ago, and as the previous gentleman referenced, um, you know, it was, there was a lot going on. I was heartened to see that several committee members are folks that I know and trust, my favorite middle and high school principals, and knowledgeable administrators, but I became dismayed when I saw that the meeting was filled with so many mobilized parent groups. I am concerned about the process being affected by a few vocal influential parents. I'm wondering if this is a trend that applies to other recent changes in policies and curriculum or even the Student Investment Act decisions that will be discussed later this evening. I am now hearing that the new plan is to split Oak Hills Elementary Kids to two different middle schools. It is unprecedented that ten-year-old kids attending their neighborhood elementary school would not all feed together to their neighborhood middle school. If families choose to self-select a split with an option school, that is a choice, but I'm wondering if splitting should be something that is imposed and required with neighborhood middle schools. In a district with thirty-four elementary schools, eight middle schools, and six high schools, we should carefully consider a plan that conflicts with students filtering together to larger schools as they matriculate. I'd like Oak Hills Elementary School to continue to feed together with neighboring elementary schools to a single middle school. If a few influential parents have given the impression that all Oak Hills community members are united in wanting this split, please note that that isn't the case. Thank you.
Hello, BSD board members. I am here to talk about the latest developments in the middle school boundary adjustment process. The total population of Stoller, as it stands today, has shrunk by one hundred thirty-four kids. We had an adjustment to the numbers. It was fourteen ninety-one in twenty-twenty-five. It has come down to thirteen fifty-seven. A few questions to come to mind. What is the board objective on portables in twenty-twenty-five? So BSD has never made a clear call on the use of portables beyond twenty-twenty-one at Stoller. If the board objective is ninety percent of permanent capacity in twenty-twenty-one, to me, it automatically implies that the board's wish is to eliminate all portables at Stoller. Stoller had a security lockdown. Kids were starting portables for a greater part of the day. Five books is the right thing and got rid of portables. Uh, in one of your best middle schools, what justification do you have of not providing a true classroom experience to its attending students? Who will be responsible if anything goes wrong? If usage of portables is indeed approved by the board, why SUMA being prioritized over a neighborhood school such as Finley? Finley has been a neighborhood school for Stoller for twenty-plus years. The other, other thing I want to discuss is since it has been, the guidelines say that SUMA will not be discussed in the following meeting, but the new map depicts SUMA in Timberland Boundary. What guarantee exists from TLD that there will indeed be a SUMA program in Timberland? Has TLD made this call, or is this mayor's opposition to push the map through in the next meeting? Once a deal is sealed, but SUMA remains a floating option, will it be like BSD telling Finley, "Hey, Finley, take two buses and go down to Meadow Park for the SUMA"? We want to guarantee that there will indeed be a SUMA in Timberland. Lastly, there have been a few comments and emails from Finley parents which have not shown up in the public testimony and comments. It's been a frustrating ride, but I'm guessing you'll do the right thing and put things up for everyone to see. Thank you.
We appreciate everybody for their public participation this evening. The, the rest, the rest of the cards will be done during our public hearing for Student Investment Act. Okay, with that, we're gonna start off with our superintendent comments.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone coming and, and testifying. I'm gonna keep my comments relatively short, but some, um, significant topics. Number one, I want to talk about the COVID-nineteen coronavirus epidemic that's taken place and, um, what we're doing about it. I'm sure that you've heard that there was a, uh, a positive test, uh, yesterday or over the weekend at Hillsboro, and that's impacting that community. What we need everyone to know is we basically are taking our direction from the Oregon Health of Authority, as are all other school districts in Oregon. We're also working closely with our Department of Education, COPE, Deputy Superintendent of Instruction, and our OHA experts are recommending that schools, colleges, universities consider all alternatives before closing if a COVID-19 case is detected among students or staff. This guidance recognizes that the instruction in schools is vital to student well-being. In addition, they maintain that schools provide many of our students the only ready access to health care and food. Our district, it continues to develop remote learning opportunities for not only students identified with COVID-19, but other infections. We continually have students who are sick and have to be at home, and we try to work directly with that family in providing them their educational materials so that they can get those back to school. Our website is being updated daily. I want to, at this time, really a shout out to Deputy Superintendent Mead, who is leading our team, working with OHA. He's actually on a select group of folks that works with ODE, and we're getting the latest information daily, and then that information is being posted onto our website. And then also, if you have any questions at all, don't hesitate to call the district office. This continues to change. I'm sure that I will eventually, because we're the third-largest school district in the state, I will also receive a call that we probably have a confirmed positive at some time as it grows across not only Oregon, but the United States. So we're taking it very seriously. As our transportation, we're doing deep, we are cleaning schedules, we're doing deep cleaning, all the way from, our buses are light down every day. We're allocating more resources, cleaning supplies, in order to clean. Once again, they're recommended. I was actually able to sit with a lead doctor on this at OHA. He says basically that that's the most significant thing that you can do. Number one is wash your hands continually. If you're going to sneeze, use your elbow. And also, you know, avoid travel if possible. And then if you are sick or become ill, make sure you stay home. So those are the three things that we can continually do. We monitor, and I believe that things are changing daily. As you're aware, there's districts who have shut down for multiple times in Washington. But right now, our Oregon Health Authority is recommending that we keep our schools open. Middle school schedules and common experience, and I think you heard a little bit, I am delaying the implementation of changing middle school schedules and programming until the beginning of the 2021 school year. However, the new common scheduling and programming will be finalized by October 1 of 2020, and I am committed to that. This will allow us more time to engage stakeholders, and as you know, we will populate a new middle school in 2021. So when we do that, there will be significant transfers take place, whether it's the hiring of new folks and/or the transfers of staffing from other schools. And so my thought was, if we are going to do multiple transfers in the district, I would just as soon do them all at once to allow staff to be more consistent and to have their choice. It also allows parents a little bit more time as far as different programming in schools. The other thing it does is depending on the schedule that we choose, it will have budget implications. And right now, it will allow our finance team to be able to look at a schedule and then really put a budget to it that will support that schedule. Middle school boundary process, boundaries, you have to love them. High school, middle school, elementary, and parents are very passionate about their boundaries, are very passionate about their schools. I want to take this time to thank, and I believe I see a couple folks who are on our boundary committee. It's a very emotional, stressful time, and I want to thank those members for what they do. I've had the opportunity to reach out and talk to every single boundary committee member, with the exception of one, and they also relay and understand the stress and emotion that goes through as they go. We are planning on having a decision recommended to me by the boundary committee sometime in April. And at that time, then I will look at that recommendation and either forward the recommendation to the board for their approval in whole, and/or I will make adjustments to that recommendation and forward it to the school board for their approval, hopefully sometime in May. Implementation of the Student Success Act, we've heard a lot of testimony on that. I also want to, we've heard several stakeholders come up and talk about the Student Investment Act. I want to take this time to thank our Planning Forward Committee, OSEA, VEA, for their participation in this, and especially all of our external stakeholders who have weighed in and provided us to make some changes. I would say it's not perfect. It is still under-resourced. I believe all of the ideas that came forward to support our children were great ideas. We had to prioritize, and I support the plan fully. And I think there's something really important for the audience to know. This is not just a, if approved, this plan is in place going forward. We have to do this whole process again next year, and then we have to do it every four years where we will go through this entire process. But this year, we will begin the implementation, and we have to go through the entire process next year. That is rules, regulations, and guidance by the Department of Education. I think for the first time, and I believe President Schmidt mentioned this, we found a new way to engage our community, and that we have been woefully irresponsible in reaching out to especially some of our groups who did not feel like they had a voice, and we're trying to bring their voice to the district so we can hear them, regardless of the color of your skin, your SES, ethnicity, language spoken. And so we think it's a great opportunity, not only for the Student Investment Act process, it could be for the budget process, or a lot of the other decisions that we have to make here on a daily basis that impacts approximately the 42,000 students that we serve, as well as approximately the 5,000 staff members we serve. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent. And with that, we come to what we look forward to every month, presentations by our schools. And first up will be Cedar Park Middle School, with Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, members. Thank you so much for having me here. Any opportunity I get to talk about my amazing school is a highlight. So actually, I forgot to hand this out. So Member Tyner, she emailed me some specific questions based on the submission that I made. So I put those answers and addressed those issues in writing a little too lengthy to probably be able to go over item by item. But one of the things that I want to highlight that she specifically asked about that I was actually expecting is, so first of all, there's lots to celebrate at Cedar Park. So many of our underrepresented demographic groups have shown tremendous growth over the last three years that I am just so proud. And I've shared this data with my staff and our students and my parent groups, and I'm just really proud of all the hard work that is going in at Cedar Park. And we have a fantastic, supportive parent community, and frankly, my teachers work very hard. So, and that's where I can really just kind of celebrate why we're improving and growing so much. It's our teachers and our parents' support, and then, of course, our students. So a couple of the things that I want to point out and answer to, because it's concerning across the district, especially at the middle school level, are the number of class days missed due to suspension or expulsion, and you'll see a dramatic increase there. And I think Mr. Hess is also going to talk about this, but it's significant. And what I can tell you is that last year, we had an unusually high number of expulsions due to a few drug incidents that involved several students at the same time. So what the data shows is, it looks like, oh my gosh, we had so many incidents, but really, we didn't have that many incidents. What we had is a few incidents that involved several students, and so their numbers for suspension and class missed gets tallied together. So of course, that adds up quickly. We had nine expulsion, expulsions overall, which is more than Cedar Park typically has. I will say two of those expulsions were parent requests. Literally, I had parents saying, no, I want you to expel my student. So we do have restorative practices. It's very successful. I will be honest with you, we have had less opportunity this year to engage in those conversations with the loss of a counselor and assistant principal. Certainly, things like restorative practices, they're really important, they're really helpful, they work, but they take two to three much, they take twice or three more times as much time as just a disciplinary investigation. And so it requires staff. I'm not, I'm not making excuses. I'm just saying, like, that's an important process, and we have to have the people to do it. So, so there's also a breakdown, a racial demographic breakdown of the discipline expulsion-suspension. That is something that we talk about every year at the middle level and that we are acutely aware of. So I want to also address another thing that came as a shock to me, and I called Dr. Bridges about this, but parents reporting that they feel informed and valued as active partners in their child's education. I will say specifically that I have worked very hard to build trusting, engaging relationships with my parent community over the last four years. And what this data shows is actually two questions that are put together. Whether or not a parent feels that they're informed, and whether or not they feel valued as an active partner are two separate questions in the survey. But when you put those together, it requires that those are answered yes to both. Individually, those questions were answered yes at 78%, that parents feel informed, and 78% feel valued as an active partner in their child's education. So I would just like to offer that when you're talking about what kinds of data you want to see, when we start, like, conflating those questions together, it's not going to be as accurate of a reflection as maybe, as maybe you're wanting. And then we did have an increase in staff reporting they contribute to school decision-making. We spent a lot of time last year, and continue to do so, doing some book studies together, doing work. I'm a very transparent and collaborative leader. If you want to be part of decision-making at Cedar Park, all you have to do is come to the table. There is no requirement to be on our leadership decision-making team. It's just come to the table. So I think I've been more explicit in really talking to teachers and soliciting their input in that specifically, and so I hope that that's where that improvement came from. Again, there's more details in my notes that I handed out to you, but if there's anything that you would like me to answer or follow up from tonight, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you so much for responding and writing, having an opportunity to digest everything. I did have some specific questions, and I'm not sure if one was really addressed here, so maybe we'll just take it offline, just mostly about the black students, because you said that there were, the data was not provided to you. So I'm just kind of curious, may I just ask him? I'm just kind of curious how you can help those students if you don't know how to help them. You can't explain that to me, so that's why I was wondering.
Well, that is actually, that's a great question. And I think what that requires is some more time to drill down into the individual data. As noted here, like, on the second page, it says, "Data is not reported when there are fewer than 20 students," in the denominator. And so our black students make up 2% of Cedar Park, so the data that's presented to me does not reflect that population. That doesn't mean that I can't get it. I would have to work with Mr., with Dr. Bridges to drill down into that a little closer.
So I really want to apologize. I guess I was just looking for an overall description, not necessarily data, because, you know, being a teacher and a principal, instructional leader, I was just expecting you to speak to how you approach that based upon your experience at the school with these students. I wasn't asking for data necessarily. So I apologize for that.
And I can totally investigate that and get back to you.
So that's what I was interested in. Thank you. Yeah. Any other comments? Thank you for being here, and now we'll move on to Principal Hess from Conestoga.
Good evening. I actually prepared a further reading statement, because those who know me know that I tend to meander and wander, and I'll end up being up here talking about Conestoga for 20 minutes. So I'm just going to read this document and ask for any questions or comments that you might have, because I know your agenda is full. First and foremost, thank you for your hard work and focus on student learning and achievement. Ultimately, I think this is at the core of what we are all about. Each and every child needs to find success and feel successful. And I received some questions as well sent over the weekend. I'll do my best to answer those questions for you as I share my thoughts. Conestoga, if you didn't know, is turning 25 this year. And if my math is right, we've had somewhere between 9,000 and 10,000 students enter our doors throughout our years. Mr. Mead was the first VP, if I can point that out.
Thank you very much.
Very happy to help with that, sir. Conestoga is a school-wide allied school. Close to 100% of our students, our staff, have attended avid trainings that are focused on things like WICRizing a classroom, literacy for content areas, writing for content area teachers, math, science, language arts, social studies, content area conversations, digital teaching, culturally relevant teaching, academic language, student success, and much more. Our goal, and every class, is the expectation that we have multiple WICR strategies used in every classroom every day. The application of these principles are important because they ensure consistency that our students can count on, what, count on when they learn from different teachers and serves as a measure of consistency among our teachers that affords them opportunities to align instruction and strategies more completely from class to class and from grade to grade. All of our staff development activities are presented using avid and wicked strategies that are taught and highlighted as strategies that could easily be moved into a classroom on a day, on a moment's notice. As part of being an avid school, we have four teacher-led committees that follow the avid principles. They are the Instruction, Culture, Systems, and Leadership Committees. All of them are voluntary and chaired by staff members who facilitate that work. After looking at our achievement data, discipline data, and other data, our focus for this year, and I anticipate for the years to come, will remain focused on establishing systems that develop and maintain relationships that are equitable, collaborative, solution-oriented, and balanced. As a staff, we have spent a lot of time developing and learning, front learning about trauma-informed care, community circles, and restorative practices. Last year, like, I think Cedar was a very odd year in the arena of choices that students made. We're pleased to say that billing decreased by 50%. Nevertheless, vaping issues went up like never before. Students were vaping in either THC or nicotine, went up exponentially. Multiple students were involved in multiple incidents of vaping with these chemicals. I'm pleased to say that this year has been much different than the data suggests, but we're moving in a much more acceptable way. I'm hopeful that our work with the community and the information we provide to students and parents have helped with that improvement. In addition to working with relationships that are positive with staff, we have committed to our teachers that we must be literacy instructors in all areas, in all classes, at all times. During our last step of staff development, for example, we focused on strategies that encourage critical thinking and communicating while reading. that encourage critical thinking and communicating while reading about issues of equity and social emotional learning. Following these activities, staff were given opportunities to develop shareable, multi-level text sets for their specific areas of study for upcoming units. Lastly, we've spent a lot of time looking at issues of equity in our school. We focus on the attention in two different areas, academic equity and discipline equity. Through statewide assessment data and through data that can be gathered and reviewed at district and school levels, we found a lot of interesting things. Interestingly, our academic data for students of color taking rigorous coursework and finding success in coursework has been very positive. This is documented through our state achievement data. Most of the groups that are recorded through the Department of Education are continuing to show great individual growth. Our Hispanic students have remained flat in language arts and in math jumped up 20% two years ago and have since been relatively flat. We have some work to do in that area. Fortunately, we have found that and monitored our students' classroom achievement as they matriculate to both South Ridge and Mountain Side, that our students are for the most part finding great success in their freshman work. We're in the process of developing a student equity council that has been talked about, actually. Here is an important need that meets monthly for the rest of the year and will expand into next year. Specifically, the public stated goal of this group is to ensure that every child and adult are working toward a school that is void of racist and exclusionary practices. And we will engage in activities that inspire understanding, encourage conversations and enhance participation in everything that we do. The students who are part of that group will be expected to share their experiences and perceptions of how we as a school are working to make our school better for all kids. We will identify areas that need attention and more importantly, explore solutions to these opportunities. In the spirit of equity and learning, we have made conscious decisions as a school to develop a master schedule that allows for learning choices for our students. We offer robust elective offerings including drama band, choir, art, technology band, along with full day PE for our students. These have been decisions that have been consciously by our staff and are committed by our staff to continue. We're incredibly proud of what we've accomplished at Comestoga, but I am never satisfied. Folks know that. There is much to be done in the growing needs of our kids. Our staff, in my opinion, probably would be contradicted by my partner here, second to none. And we work incredibly hard to make sure these students are exposed to world-class instruction every day. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but we're incredibly proud of what we have accomplished both at Comestoga and throughout our middle schools. We do a lot of good things every day for all of our kids.
I just have a question. I just want to thank you because I think you covered a lot of the things that I asked for, so.
I tried to.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And?
Yeah, I just had a comment that I agreed to share. What I appreciated in both of your reports was that you didn't know all the answers, but that you were asking the right questions and ready to keep doing the work. And so I just wanted to highlight that there's a lot of good things done, that there's still lots more to do. And that I just recognize the fact that, you know, we have to start with thinking, well, what can we do better, what needs to happen here next? And it's clear that you're focused on that, so thank you.
Eric?
I noticed in both schools, like you know, a lot of the behavioral problems, expulsions and stuff is like related to drug use or vaping and stuff. So you guys have any pearls of wisdom because there's not been an epidemic on all the middle schools and high schools?
I think it's a community cultural issue. I just met with a parent who had some real concerns about a discipline issue that we had at school last week. And like I said to her, like I share the same concerns. Does Cedar Park have a drug problem? Well, I would say that our community needs to address that. It's not like we're handing it out. Do we have a vaping problem to some extent, but we're not handing it out. It's coming in. So, so how do we address that? We can address it in our small world, but there's a bigger community discussion that needs to start happening.
From my perspective, I think it's, it is absolutely a community thing. These things are so available and readily available anymore that they can be, in a moment's notice, picked up just about anywhere. Example, a student just recently who has found the vape pen, had been collecting his own allowance for a number of weeks in cash, converted it into a credit card that he then purchased online through Amazon, it was sent to his friend's house and he had himself a vape pen. Father was stunned, had no idea that it was happening. Those kinds of things I think are pretty regular.
Yeah, they are. And, and just to also, we don't like to expel kids, never do we want to say we don't want you at our school, but part of that is a school safety and a student safety issue. And for that, I will always be firm. It's my job first and foremost to make sure that my students are safe. And so if there is, if that's coming in, we're going to do everything we can to support that student to make different choices. And if they don't, ultimately, it's my responsibility to take care of everybody else.
Any other questions? I will just ask Principal Hess here a little quick.
One of my favorite avid tutors.
I was going to go talk about it. But since you brought it up.
Yeah.
How long have you been at Comestoga?
I think I'm going on 15 years or so.
15 years?
Yeah.
And I've been right there with you for just 15 years. What would you say is the biggest change that you have seen as a principal in 15 years at Comestoga?
Biggest change? There's a lot of them. I think the one that comes to mind the most, I think, is maybe student resilience. I find that when they trust, when students are challenged with something, sometimes they're choosing to put up the white flag and maybe giving up more than they normally would. And we need to find ways to make sure the kids feel empowered and capable to meet those challenges as they're presented to them. A lot of being asked of them, more than I think I was asked when I was in middle school or junior high. And we've got to find better ways to meet those kids' needs when they feel like they can't survive or exist or continue with whatever they're being challenged with. We've got to find ways to engage them in a more effective way.
It's interesting because the key word this last Tuesday in avid was, what does the word grit mean?
There is something to that, for sure.
Anyway, thank you both for your, for your service to our students and for your reports. We appreciate having you on, Mike. All right, next up, Flash Report. Associate Superintendent Schofield?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair Timchek, members of the board. This is my fourth financial report for you. And finally, I have a little bit of good news, worked into the numbers. So if you jump to the bottom line on the right-hand side, which, which I typically look at first, you'll see our fund balance is now projected to be above $25 million, $26.4 million. That primarily comes from two places, increase in revenue of about $3 million and a projected a little bit of savings on the expenditure side of about $3 million. So that is definitely good news from where we've been in the past. The additional revenue sources primarily the state school fund. Remember, at any given time, we have three years that we're working with. So we're still working with 1819 last year. We're working with 1920 this year. And so those two numbers got a little better in our estimate. If you remember in the 1819 year, that's the end of a biennium. The state school fund will release their $20 million reserve at the end of a biennium. So we expect to get a bump from that. And in addition to that, in the 1920 year, our actual funding for students up a little bit. So that's the good word on this year. We are going to get one, we're biting the apple in the next two weeks in terms of getting our resources where we think we need to be in preparation of presenting you a 2020, 2021 budget.
Any questions? Eric?
Yeah, I was really, I love that, I mean, more revenue in, less expense out. So my main question on this was, you think those are unsustainable? Like maybe on expenses, is this like one-time things or just more, you're getting things kind of dialed in?
I think we're getting things dialed in, Eric. I think from a sustainability perspective, we're taking what we have this year and we're, that's instructive to building next year's budget as well as we roll staff into the new year. We, we have an eye on sustainability for sure in the out years. You know, we've been working on a long-range financial plan and this certainly will influence that as we build budgets in the coming years. So yes, there's some sustainability built in that.
Any other questions?
Well, we appreciate the, the good news.
Thank you, finally.
Next up is Steve, Mr. Sparks, to bring us up to date on the middle school boundary process.
Chair Timchek, members of the board. My name is Steven Sparks. I'm the executive administrator for long-range planning. And the purpose of tonight's agenda item is to provide you with a brief update on the middle school boundary adjustment process that is taking place today. Since we last met back in December, the committee has had six meetings. They're going to have another one this Thursday. The committee has reviewed two dozen maps and dozens and dozens of ideas for how to, how to look at and how to come up with a recommendation to the superintendent for the boundary adjustment. This Thursday, we're looking for a preliminary conclusion of the committee. We have one map that we have presented to them. We are also responding to a number of questions that the committee asked at that last meeting. So the report also identifies the amount of public testimony, public participation that we receive to date on this project. And I'm happy to talk about any of the next steps as a part of this discussion, if you would like to. And with that, I will end my comments and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? And?
Steve will be relieved to know I actually don't have any questions. But I do want to take a minute just to share a few observations because I, Zone Two, which I represent, has been particularly impacted by this process. And I've had a lot of opportunity to meet with different groups and I just wanted, this feels like the right time to update my board colleagues. I have had the opportunity to meet with very large groups, parents. I know that, as in the report, so has Steve and other district staff. In general, parents and community members are very engaged as, I think the dry report might not let you know that boundary committee meetings are overflowing. If you haven't been to the Five Oaks Cafeteria, imagine it, you know, full of overflowing. There's a lot of engagement in this process. The sheer number of comments has been really, I would say, almost overwhelming for somebody who was trying to read all of them. I encourage board members to make sure that you take a peek at all 3,000 from a single elementary school. That will give you an idea of the kind of volume that we're talking about. The groups that I've met with have been particularly interested in understanding what the process will look like. They have been keenly watching the committee and then they want to know what happens and specifically, where does the board fit in? And I think they have been reassured to understand exactly how this process will go and what the next steps will be. And then I think some, there, the one thing I would share with Steve and the others who are helping very confidently to lead this process through, there is some confusion around the objectives and so much so that I was almost relieved when I saw how clearly we actually had written them in the first place. The objective of the committee, the number one, is to create an attendance boundary that fills Timberland Middle School. We did not tell them to fill it with option students. We directed to fill, to create an attendance boundary. This committee has been struggling with that. I'm sure they will continue to do so, but I think that that one bit of board work, we were pretty clear in our direction and I look forward to getting their recommendation.
I guess I just wanted to make, you know, another comment, just to add clarity. I know there's been some comments made about information that is provided to the boundary committee, maybe in writing or by email, and the inability to see maybe the comments in real time. But I think we only have one person, maybe Steve can collaborate that with me or not, who's actually getting all the data in and posting them. And you can tell by the sheer volume of the, of the comments that are coming in, it's kind of difficult to get everything in quickly. It's not that it hasn't been received and, and reviewed. It's just, it's difficult to get it quickly posted. So maybe Steve can speak to that more.
Thank you for that question. Yes, we have received a huge volume of public comment. And we had, when we first started, we were going through and formatting the email and trying for the comments and try to make it nice and clean. And when we started, it, you know, the, the amount of comments that we were receiving, we did turn it around pretty quickly and then it got really large. And so what we've done is we stopped doing the formatting and cleaning up the comments in order to expedite posting as quickly as possible. I believe we have, it'll be, I think we're through Friday last week on the comments being posted to the webpage. And we're continuing to chew through the comments that have been submitted and we post them as quickly as we can.
Any other comments? Eric?
I know we evolved over the last couple of years with the boundary changes. Do you feel like this committee that you guys all put together is transparent and everybody's data-driven without objectives of their own?
I think this is the best committee that I've worked with in my career in terms of representation, interests, thought patterns. This is a really good group of thoughtful, considerate people. There are challenges, of course, anytime you're working with 16 different individuals of trying to, you know, build consensus on items. In terms of the committee's work, they're, they're doing the best that they can with everything that we're providing to them. In terms of transparency, we've done everything in the middle. There hasn't been any, you know, closed-door meetings. There hasn't been any, you know, secret reports or anything like that. So what we've given to the advisory committee is posted on our webpage. Everyone's able to look at and review those materials when the committee is discussing those at a commission or a committee meeting.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Sparks. We know the heavy lifting is still to come and we appreciate the work that the committee has, has taken on and we look forward to seeing the final plan after Superintendent Grady. All right, the main attraction. Student Investment Act, Deputy Superintendent Hanson. vacations director, Mueller. Ms. Williams.
Good evening. Good evening. School Board and Superintendent Grady. We are very excited tonight to be able to share with you our Beaverton School District Student Investment Account Plan that we have been working on all year since September and maybe even August. So we're very excited to share, share it with you this evening. This team met regularly every two weeks throughout the school year from September until now. You'll see the names of the people up there. We had people from school board, we had BEA members and administrators from the district. This team worked diligently throughout the year to make sure that we were engaged in our community, taking input from all stakeholders and making sure that our plan was thorough and effective. So we're very excited to share those results with you today.
Thank you. So we really want to take it really quickly back through what is the Student Success Act of the Student Investment Act, the Student Investment Account component of it? I know most people know this, so we'll try to hit this really quickly for everybody's enlightenment. I, I want to acknowledge again the heavy lift that everybody in this community and communities all over the state made in ensuring the passage of the Student Success Act in the 2019 legislative session. Again, acknowledging the folks behind me in our community, Beaverton, and I've said it before, but I would say it again, Beaverton was ever-present in the legislative conversation, not just via the concerted diligent efforts here on the ground, but also the literally thousands of letters and testimonials sent into the legislature to flood their online testimonial system to really show pressure and drive from communities. So thank you again for that, to everybody. So again, the component we're talking about So again, the component we're talking about is a slice of the overall Student Success Act. The Student Success Act is chopped up into three pieces. The statewide initiatives component, which contains a number of measures, notably full funding for Measure 98, the High School Success Initiative, and wide expansion of reimbursable bills for school nutrition and a number of other items. And then a 20% investment in early childhood education, Oregon Preschool Promise, Oregon Head Start Expansion, et cetera. What we're talking about today is the 50% of the measure that is allocated to the Student Investment Account. This is about 427, 472, if you can read, a million dollars statewide this current year. This is, again, ongoing revenue. This is a new revenue source for the state through a corporate activities tax that should be ongoing in perpetuity. And we couldn't be more excited about the pressure release to the system as a whole. The measure allows for four areas of expenditure, reducing class size, well-rounded education, instructional time, and health and safety. I would note that there is legislative language under each of these subheadings to broaden their scope to a certain degree and they do provide additional nuance. I will not belabor them here, but they are broader than just, just simply those four packages listed. Those investments, however, are meant to be targeted at two goals. One is meeting the students' mental and behavioral health needs. When the legislature traveled around the state, they heard significant outcry, just as we have seen here locally, about the both disruptive behavior but also the true mental health needs of our students these days in our system, not just here but across the state. The second is increasing students' academic achievement and reducing historic disparities for full populations in the district. And those are further defined as students with special needs, students on IEP, our emerging bilingual students, students experiencing poverty, homeless students, foster students, our Black students, our Latinx students, and our Asian Pacific Native Hawaiian students as well, and our Native American students. I think I've got all of the listed. Those are both defined in statute as well as by the Department of Education. You can see some of them listed here on this page. Again, the bill, the plan put forth by district must meet certain requirements as we discuss here from the measure, again focusing on those two overall goals. We are in the middle of this serpentine timeline put out by the Department of Ed. You see this march. The application window right now is open. The department is choosing to operate a submission window, which operates from last Monday through April 15th, tax day, yay, for submission. As I understand, I think about eight districts have submitted so far as of Friday afternoon. It's not a race to the top, to use a pejorative maybe. It is a categorical funding allocation to every school district. So it is not, is a non-competitive grant application regardless of when you submit in that window. However, if you do not submit in that window, you do not get funds. They are very clear about that. And by the way, we'll cover some of the next steps at the end of the presentation. And without saying, I think if you have questions as we go through this, I think we'd be open to fielding them as they come or at the end as well. So the measure requires us to sort of put these pieces together using a variety of analytical tools, both objective and subjective, available to the school district. I think Maureen is going to cover some of that through our community engagement work we did. I think signature to this process was essentially a legislative request in the form of the law, but a legislative request nonetheless that districts think differently about how they approach policymaking and initiative setting within a school's community, not just internally but to think externally as well in engaging our partners across the community and defining both what the needs are and the best methods by which to address those needs in a partnership manner. And I think it's fair to say that we all learned an immense amount throughout this process and looking forward to more changes as we go forward into future years of SIA planning because it's the gift that keeps on giving. We'll do this next fall and then two years after that and so forth and so on. The SIA application has a number of requirements listed here as you can see, lifted from the statute, take into account input from the community, consider data collected to make equity-based decision through an equity lens. We use the district's adopted equity policy and equity lens. Consider the Continuous Improvement Plan, which is a requirement, a document that is required to be produced from the Every Student Succeeds Act. Consider the recommendations of the Quality Education Commission. I won't belabor that. If you have questions about what that is, people are free to ask me afterwards, but it's essentially an evidence-based model put forth by the state to determine what's the best and how much it costs to get students to standards. And then employ the, up to the four uses and meet the two purposes in statute. Beaverton's preliminary estimate was this $32,79,013, that is an estimate, and a portion of this comes off the top as a, an amount dedicated to the two charter schools operating in the district and that is contained in our application as well. One last bit of context setting for folks, because I know we've gotten this question a lot, and this has been a very public process putting together this application, but it is for $32 million. Just give you a sense, of course, that big blue wedge there, the Pac-Man portion of this is the general fund budget for the district and approximately, these are rounded numbers, approximately $525 million. So when we think about what it is that the district does, while we believe the SIA is a catalyst for change across the district and across the general fund, we will be doing a vast amount of work across this district that is really the entirety of the budget. But you can see the various slices composed there.
So let's get to the community engagement requirements and the activities that we did to engage the community. We did some things differently and I think that that was really a great opportunity for us to be able to dig a little bit deeper and create an ongoing and intentional engagement, particularly of our focal populations that this law is intended to serve. Some of the activities that we did were empathy interviews and focus groups. We have that at both of the district level as well as at the school. We have four large community-based forums, as you know, you came to some of those. We have well over 4,000 survey responses and of course, we've often said it's probably well in excess of 5,000 to 6,000 actual individuals that participated in groups perhaps, so we didn't count groups by how many people were in the group, but that's a learning for us to be able to say, was this a group or an individual? The multilingual department did amazing work with their nine key linguistically, culturally sensitive focus groups that they did with American Indian, Alaska Native, Latinx, Arabic, Korean, Vietnamese, Russian, Somali, Chinese, Japanese, ELL parents. They did 18 focus groups in total in just Phase One, which was really quite remarkable. And they offered childcare and food and that's how they do that work. And so really kudos to Toshiko and her team because they really did a lot of wonderful work with those families. We did hear from students. We heard a number of students, about 1,000 took the survey in Phase One. And then there were also our Student Advisory Committee from the School Board also weighed in and gave the, gave the district some input as well. And then our Special Education Parent Advisory Group provided input in Phase One. In Phase Two, we did some different kinds of activities by doing those three convenings of the student health, we did an equity community-based organizations, we did instructional leaders. That brought together about 20 to 25 people that were experts in their fields and they met for about three hours and then worked through a fishbone protocol and really did the root cause analysis and the fishbone protocol to really help us get a little further down the line, get at the depth of what is the issue, what are the issues that our families are finding in each of these areas? And it was a wonderful expertise by having our community-based organizations, something we have not done. And we're learning that there's more and more interest for those community-based organizations to come out here, a lot from our Multnomah County, and to come out in Washington County because there's such a need. We're more diverse than Portland, in fact, with over 100 languages and just the diversity here. They're finding that there is a great need and we're so pleased that we had their participation. The student health and safety organizations that came along alongside, really looked at the student and the behavioral, mental health aspects and really dug in. We were fortunate to work with Washington County, with NAMI, which is the National Alliance of Mental Illness, and just other key partners that really do this work in the community that come alongside and share their expertise and really help to, help us understand depth of the problem and what we could do to move forward. And then the third convening was instructional leaders and that involved administrators as well as teachers and classified and really digging into the data and then also looking at the key focus, focal populations that we really wanted to make sure that we addressed in the plan. Again, three to four hour facilitated work sessions and then from that, we brought together representatives from those three convenings to an all-day drafting session to start to put the, the bones of our draft plan together. And we produced that preliminary draft plan. And then again, we went out to the public, we went out to do some deeper conversations with, with one community forum. We looked, we asked people to really identify deficiencies and blind spots that we might not have addressed. We were so fortunate to have the Beaverton Black Parent Union step forward. They have formed, as well as the Beaverton Families for Equity, and we sat and had a focus group with them, a one to two-hour focus group, and just had conversations about, does this plan hit the spot? We actually did get feedback that made us change the plan for what that draft plan was. And again, the multilingual department did outreach to their families yet again. They did nine focus groups, ran out of the plan through Lance for their feedback as well. The final drafting incorporates all that feedback and that's what's in your packets So we're going to share with you our proposed plan. It comes in two different areas. The first one is our instructional area, which is made up of three different key areas of investment. So there's the equity-focused instructional investment, the Student Success Teams for Mental and Behavioral Supports for Students, and Danielle will be speaking to those, and then the equity-based systems improvement. So I'll be starting with the first, which is the equity-focused instructional investment. This is one that we're most excited about. The biggest bucket here is for 6.8 million and it's to protect current classroom staffing district-wide catalyst for equity-based reform of staffing allocation method. So what it will do is it will distribute classroom staffing with weighted student formula, adding poverty weight for redistribution of allocations, which would be .25 at the elementary and .5 at the secondary. So you'll see that our higher poverty schools will be receiving more resources for class size. And in addition to that, we will, we are targeting additional investment with the same poverty weighting for classroom teachers at grades K through 2, which comes to an additional 4.3 million. This also, and other, what we found in the research was it was really important to lower class size and at the same time couple it, couple it with instructional strategies. So many of these strategies are meant to be tied with our lower class sizes, which would include the caseload reduction for emerging bilingual students at 658,000, early literacy intervention supports, which would bring our Title I schools to a full-time intervention teach specialist, and that comes at 950,000. Also, again, making sure that we have professional development and resources that are tied to our lower class sizes. So we will have professional development for early literacy focus, which includes the dyslexia supports, it includes our ELD, our, and other assessment practices throughout the district. That is an investment for 380,000. We will be looking at culturally responsive materials for our libraries and classrooms that match what our students need to see in our classrooms at 383,000. There will be an extended day extracurricular opportunity for all of our middle schools and it is support that is there now for a few of our middle schools, but we will be extending it to all of our middle schools. And that will be an investment of 570,000. And finally, a 50,000 investment for material support for dyslexia implementation.
Thank you all. As you can imagine, I am super excited to be up here right now to talk about our Student Success Teams. So in our proposal, what we heard from the community, from our teachers, from students, was about the need to address the social, emotional needs of students within the district. So a large part of our Student Investment Account is going to increase those supports throughout the district. So the main part being the development of Student Success Teams. These are multidisciplinary teams that will have, so at the elementary level, we'll look at having a counselor, a nurse, a social worker, a student success coach, an intervention teacher, resource room teacher, and a school psychologist. So this is a team of well-trained staff to come together and talk about students, to plan for them, provide direct support to students as well as to staff. At the secondary level, we're looking at the same kind of idea around the Student Success Team. However, they, we include the grad mentors there because we have that support at the high school level. And really what these teams will be doing is this, an idea of a multi-tiered support system. So we're starting with the first tier and of universal supports for all students and then as students have increased needs, we're able to tailor our supports directly to them. As we work on restorative practices and restorative conferencing, we'll now have staff in the building to be able to dedicate time to do that work with our students. Additionally, they'll provide whole group instruction to students, small group and individual counseling, parent education, and staff will be trained as well to support with suicide screenings and threat assessments. We will be focusing on hiring a diverse workforce. One of the things we heard through meeting with our Beaverton Parents for Equity Group was making sure that as we're hiring staff, whether it's increasing counselors or it's social workers, that we're really recruiting individuals that look like the student population that they're working with. And because we know that as we're working with families and students, to have that diversity in our staff is essential. Additionally, with these Student Success Teams, we'll be looking at having cross-team affinity groups. So as we're looking at our hiring and we're looking at this range of counselors, student success coaches, social workers, nurses, how can they come together if there's an incident to respond to, you know, an incident of racial, racial, cultural, linguistic, or ability kind of fueled incidents in there so they can come together? We won't ask just assign someone to them, that obviously there'll be volunteers who are having interest to do that work. Additionally, then, we, part of the Student Success Team approach that is really interesting is that these are going to be teams that come together and we're using funds from SIA, Measure 98, and general fund. And through those blending of funds, we're able to really increase the number of students who are available for instruction. So one of the pieces that we're seeing is that we have students who aren't available for instruction and so then that may disrupt the instruction of other students in the classroom. So we want to have real-time people there to do that, so now we can have more kids in the classrooms learning. So income, with all of these funds, the big thing that we're super excited about is we're going to see a full-time social worker in every single school. We're going to see a student success coach and intervention teacher in all of our elementary schools. We're seeing through, we're going to see an increase of two counselors at our larger elementary schools. We'll have a secondary counseling ratio of 1 to 399, which is down from 1 to 499. We'll see a college and career readiness counselor and flexible counseling still within our buildings, as well as a behavioral health para educator to support with wellness centers and direct real-time instruction with students at the secondary level. We are also seeing a decrease in our special education resource room caseloads and having a base of a full-time resource room teacher at every elementary school and every option school, three resource room teachers at every- school, three resource room teachers at every middle school, and four resource room teachers at every high school, and reducing those caseloads so they can provide direct support to students. Additionally, we are adding some school funds. So what I would tell you is our original plan that came out was probably about $70 million worth of supports, and then David said I couldn't do all of them, so that's okay. So we think this plan is really good, even though the 70 million would have been amazing. So what we knew we had to do was then add some supports district-wide to reduce some caseloads. And so with that, we're adding, our full-time nurses will go from serving four buildings to three buildings, so we'll see a reduction in that. We're going to see an increase in school psych time to all of our elementary schools. It's a little bit, but a little bit goes a long way. If I'm a school psych and I'm split between four buildings, maybe now I'm only split between three. We're looking at increased speech-language pathologist time across all schools, and then we'll have, we'll go from 5.2 autism consultants to 6.2. We have over 850 students in our district who are eligible for special education under autism spectrum disorder, so they will have an increase of another one to help support directly with that. And then the other thing our team really felt like we needed to invest in was some drug and alcohol counselors. As we heard from Shannon and Diane earlier, this kind of need to wrap around and look at that drug and alcohol component for our students is huge. So these drug and alcohol counselors will be hired, and they'll be able to provide the drug and alcohol assessments, they'll be able to facilitate diversion programs, and provide the educational opportunities to students and staff and families free of charge. Families now have to pay for a lot of their drug and alcohol assessments outside, so we will have trained staff here who can get to students and get access to them. But additionally, for that, there's other components that we need to add, and so we've added through the multilingual department, some additional support for the student success teams, looking at our multilingual liaisons to be able to work with families. So as we're doing translation and interpretations, we realize if we're having these meetings or we're having these parent nights, we're going to see an increase in that need. So we added some support in there, so that we can be culturally responsive as we're having those meetings with families, and talking about pretty sometime topics that can be off-putting to families. Additionally, we will have funding for professional development and materials. We're looking at selecting materials K-12 to address the social-emotional learning needs of students, and then we'll also have to invest in the professional development of hiring over 50 people into the system. We are also going to be adding deployable staffing in terms of classified sub-supports for when we have kind of those short-term crises that might happen. We have a student who moves in, who's really needing some direct support immediately, so there will be a means for schools to access that support as we're trying to go through the process of figuring out, as we're learning a student. And then lastly, we will increase our partnership with NAMI, who we've been working with this year in terms of offering teacher and family professional development. We'll be growing our partnership with them for a parent education program to expand kind of the knowledge and opportunities for family around mental illness.
Next, we're going to talk about some of the equity-focused systems improvements, and I'm going to have Pat kick us off talking about a couple of the top items on here.
Sure. Good evening, Board. The two items that I want to talk about are the district-wide equity training that we're going to engage in with the Oregon Center for Educational Equity. That's a group that many of our neighboring districts have been partnering with for a long time. Many of our own staff have been through some of the seminars that they do. The rough estimate is 365,000 a year that would provide for two to three intensive five-day trainings that initially is going to be aimed at leadership, because part of that involves being trained as facilitators for the in-district seminars that we'll offer, which we're hoping to do four to five times a year, which would be addressed at, or be populated above 90 people at a time, including certified, classified, and administrative employees. The idea being that over time, over a 10-year visionary plan, we would ultimately get all roughly 5,000 members of our staff. That would be in accompaniment of ongoing professional development in buildings led by building administrators focusing on equity. So it's not that we are only offering it to those staff who are able to attend, but that's supplemental to work that we're also doing. To help with that, there is the creation of an Equity TOSO, which would double the population of the Office of Equity and Inclusion to two, which would be very exciting. And part of that would be to help facilitate those trainings, but a lot of it too would be to help develop some of the professional development that we could then offer to building leaders to help support them in their work.
This might be a good time for a question. Of course, a lot of the practices are data-driven, and I know that, so who's going to be looking at the data, analyzing the data, or are you going to be hiring someone to do data analysis?
So Donna, our intent is to restore the data analyst position that we had in the district up until about a year and a half ago, and that would be funded out of the indirect portion of the SIA funds, if that's approved.
So if that's approved, that's kind of concerning. So how do we get that approved?
It would be part of the normal budget process because it's not at the SIA.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
I would add, and I think that the valuable resource here, as I talk about the next two positions, the three positions here along with Pat would sort of function as a cross-departmental team that focus on, you know, broad-based systems improvements in the district, including the way we approach access and analyze data along with that data analyst. So really looking at changing the way we provide that data and analyze it in the district as well.
Thank you.
So the next one on here is the HR administrator for equity-focused recruitment and retention. This, I would note, is the sole administrator being funded with our SIA plan, but hearing loud and clear the concerns about our workforce representing our student population and our need to change practice around recruitment and retention of a diverse workforce, not just with our SIA hirings, of which there will be a number, but with our district overall as we go through a massive demographic shift in the system. So really focusing and highlighting that as an administrative position that we'll be working on developing those systems and changing the way we do our hiring practice and the way we put together our applicant pools to ensure that we do have that diverse workforce. That position will also receive, we put in a small amount of discretionary funds, that that position would put together a plan for the use of those funds as a way to break down financial barriers that may exist for our internal workforce of color or external candidates who may face other obstacles in achieving their desired licensures or other opportunities. I don't, we don't know exactly what this would look like. Again, this would be the first task of that administrative position, thinking about, is there a way to do things like pay for health insurance while a candidate is doing a practicum, or help offset additional tuition costs or things of that nature? But that would be to be defined. And then the next position on here is an equity-focused community organizer position. This would be housed in the office of the superintendent and would really be an externally facing position that would work with our community, small C, specifically targeted to our community of color and underrepresented students in the district, whether that be through existing formal organizations that might need support branching out and developing in Washington County, whether that be through some of the newer parent-focused organizations that have arisen, which we've had a wonderful conversation. This position might assist with capacity building amongst those organizations, or further broaden a formal access point to the school district, so that we can have a deeper level of engagement. And then again, these positions would operate as that cross-departmental team as mentioned above. The last bit is the allowable indirect costs. This is the statutorily allowable amount capped at $500,000. I believe we're allowed, the measure allows districts to charge whatever their indirect rate, which could be upwards of a million and a half dollars, but it is capped at $500,000. These funds are used to pay for a variety of backend services in the district, not required to be defined in here. Obviously, with the additional work that this, the staffing and hiring, you have back, sort of quote "back office" costs associated with that, including some opportunities to expand back services elsewhere in the district.
So guess who's going to talk about longitudinal growth targets? That would be me. So to reiterate what David said earlier, these are just placeholders. ODE has told districts you have to put in some numbers, but we are going to co-develop or negotiate those numbers after your application is approved. And those numbers that are co-developed or negotiated will come back to you for final approval later this spring. So I really don't want to talk about numbers that we don't think are going to be approved, just know that districts have to establish three goals. One is a baseline, which is really where are you now? A stretch target, it's like, if everything goes well with our investments, what would we really like to see in terms of student outcomes? And then the third is a gap closing goal. So the distance between the performance of our, a student that is a member of one or more popul groups versus a student that's not a member of any popul group, that gap that we have right now needs to close over the next five years. So in the Q and A, I'd be happy to answer any questions about those numbers if you're interested. I feel this will not be her fit.
I think it's, what's notable here, what the department is trying to do is get away from the sort of old framework of adequate yearly progress or other single point-in-time metrics, and really trying to think about the broad base with which we need, both to continue progress overall, but as well as to close gaps in the district and to have multiple measures along that path. That's what you see here. So let's talk about the budget a little bit. We obviously listed some of those numbers previously. I will apologize, some of these numbers on these sheets have been slightly rounded for presentation purposes, so don't sit there and add them up. The actual formal budget is in the entire SIA application, which is in board books, if you ask specific questions about those. These are blocked on this chart here based on the three different areas that we discussed today. Another way to look at it, this is a component of the formal budget contained in your packet, it just breaks it down by these both statutorily and department-defined allowable use categories, so you can see where the emphasis is in the district. And then the last question that we have received is this question of, what are we funding in the SIA that is currently being funded in the district already? As you know, we do have a structural deficit in the district, and that's obviously been a significant challenge as we begin to think about the budget for next year. So I've broken that out into these columns here. That first column is the positions funded, and then the dollar amount for those, those first two columns, that are current general fund efforts that will be maintained by the student investment account investment. So about 98 positions maintained for about $12.9 million of the SIA application. It is notable that these were positions that obviously are aligned with what arose through our community conversations and these assessment work and the competing work. And then the next couple of columns are the additional new investment from SIA above the transfer from the general fund components for about 129 overall positions, or $18.7 million, getting you to that 32.2 million. Again, you might ask the question over here, this says 32.7, and this one says 32.2. The delta there is the funds that will be distributed to our two charter schools, ARPO Furious and Hope Chinese, who are both electing to participate in our plan, and they have separate components contained within the SIA application. The full application is posted online, they did their own process to determine where their investments fit, and they will be held to the same metric requirements that we are held to as well going forward, as well as reporting requirements for use of those funds. Lastly, we want to talk very briefly about the Tier Two activities. The preface I would put on this is that Tier Two activities, so it's fair to say that of the $32 million we're looking to invest next year with the SIA, it's possible that there might be challenges in getting all of that up and running, not the least of which being workforce and hiring. If we are hiring 40-plus social workers, Portland Public is hiring 50-plus social workers, it's possible that we might not be able to completely staff that level of the initiative. And to that end, the department has encouraged school districts to think about what is more or less pejoratively a backup strategies in the event that not all of the funds can be expended on your primary tier one strategies. The statute requires that all the dollars be expended by July 1 of 2021. We are allowed to apply for a one-time waiver to extend that until September 1 of 2021, but that's not a significant amount of time. There is no carryover allowed across the biennium, unlike our general fund budgets. So it is important that we have opportunities that can be implemented in a one-time, rapid implementation way that align with the requirements of the SIA, that can drive funds to support students in a variety of means. And I would note a variety of means on here. These are a wide swath of strategies, from instructional strategies, support for culturally responsive practices, as well as some physical infrastructure supports noted at the bottom. Those are all allowable expenditures under the SIA. The question that will often come up would be what process does the, will the district have in place to determine at what point in time and which of these priorities, which of these Tier Two activities would get funded? I would note, this is not a prioritized list, and we do not currently have a process, but we'll be putting together that process by the end of the year for both determination of when and how much would need to be leveraged in a Tier Two strategy, and what process would exist to prioritize within that list. So a little bit of stay tuned on that. That is not a required component of the SIA, nor do we understand the department to be regulating any aspect of that at this time. So let's talk really quickly about next steps. Obviously, the plan is before you for board approval. It is required by statute to be approved, ad hoc board meeting at which a public hearing is held. It would then go to the Department of Ed for approval. They have an online submission system. They will be putting together review panels. They will have first a staff review process, followed by a panel review process of community members from around the state. Small C community, could be district personnel, ESE personnel, community members, or others who have applied to be a part of these review panels. The department has noted that no review panel member would review their own district's plan if they are a resident of that district. So our plan would be reviewed by a review panel composed of people not from Beaverton. Upon approval by the Department of Ed, we would then engage in a growth target negotiation process with the department. As John presented the draft targets, those would most likely change as we negotiate with the Department of Ed over what are the appropriate targets within the statutory requirements. Following conclusion of that negotiation, that is then required to come back to you for final approval of the growth targets, ideally before the end of the fiscal year. I think, I would applaud the department with the pace with which they are approaching this. I think it is a monumental task that they hope to get all of this done by the end of the school year, because they will have over 190 of these applications to review. The last thing I want to note, the superintendent has directed us to form what we're at the moment calling an SIA Implementation and Engagement Advisory Committee. This would be a committee of community members and others that would help us with the implementation process, advise us on authentic, ongoing engagement as we think about the process next year for revising and renewing the plan, and review the financials and other implementation aspects as we present them to the board and to you, to the department and to you as a board as well. The other duties of this committee remaining to be defined, and we're excited for this opportunity to create a formal engagement feedback loop with the community. And then I just put in next year, because as I said before, next, beginning next fall, we will restart an engagement process with the community around our SIA plan and application, and begin to have this conversation all over again about where we about where we should be most appropriately placing these investments. That plan will be for a four-year plan. I would note this is a three-year plan as contained in the full application. However, the emphasis is obviously on the first year of this plan as we will immediately begin engaging in a renewal process within that first year process. And with that, I think we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Math. Math seems to be missing because the focus is on reading. And so, I guess my question is, describe how the SIA complements our current budgetary process as far as what's being budgeted and allocated and how math will be implemented to help students improve under that particular area.
The great thing about the Student Investment Act is that we can focus on ELA. We, in the general fund, we have a teaching and learning fund through the district where we have several dollars set aside and budgeted for next year in the areas of math because math was our adoption two years ago. We have been able to purchase resources, have professional development, and will be able to continue on until next year. We have the advantage of having some really strong instructional coaches for math, both at the elementary and secondary level right now, which are doing lesson studies in all classrooms. And with that same funding, we'll be able to continue that process through next year. So, between the Student Investment Act with our ELA work and our math work through the general fund, it complements each other along with the lower class sizes. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. I was surprised to see intervention teachers added in as part of this process, but the district has a long history of adding them and then subtracting them and then adding them and then subtracting them. So, as a part of an innovative opportunity to add funds, I was frankly shocked to see them make their way back and I was so curious to see what might be motivating them.
Well, a lot of the feedback that we have received from schools, from principals, and from teachers are that our intervention teachers are very needed, especially at the elementary level. We have had several different AORIs on the data for the intervention teachers and I think what you're seeing is, in the past, not finding exactly what the right data is to support those positions, but we know from the feedback that we're getting from our schools that these are an integral part of what we do every day and in our schools. So, that is the reason they've been added back.
So, I guess I have a related question then, and maybe Danielle can help speak to this. So, what's the difference between our resource room teachers, which we're adding in large numbers, to the intervention teachers?
So, our resource room teachers provide direct support for students with disabilities. So, these are students who are all eligible for special education. And so, right now, we'll have students who receive an intervention group and they might have a group of like two or three students in there. They don't respond to that intervention and are referred for a special education evaluation and then are found eligible for special education. They might need help in reading, writing, and math. And right now, because our caseloads are so high, their group sizes go from like two to three to five to eight within our resource room setting. So, this will help kind of pare back the amount of students who are in a group when they're getting that direct special education support.
I didn't mean to indicate that I didn't support that. No, that, I guess maybe the question is, would you like another million dollars?
Absolutely. I already said my plan was 70 million. My boss is telling you.
So, can I follow up with that? Is this also going to allow to shorten the time that it takes for us to evaluate if a student needs... Because I know that that is an issue, is how long it takes us to evaluate a student? Do they need extra resources?
Yes. So, one of the things is between the addition of our speech-language pathologists, our school psych supports, and the resource room support, the idea is, the hope is, so we have 60 days to be able to evaluate a student, but a lot of times we have to use that whole timeline because the caseloads are so large for our specialists that to get through the number of kids that we're referring, it just takes that long. So, our hope is that it will shorten the timeline in the long run because now there's more school psych time, there's more SLP time, there's more resource room support time.
I just wanted to share that Susan and Tom do not have any questions. I've been communicating with them. Why don't we get my cellphone? All right, other questions?
And this is a question, I think, for Pat. I am having a real trouble with 10 years to get to racial training for all teachers. When I think of that, I think of second graders graduating and finally getting this initiative through. And frankly, I just don't think it's acceptable.
Yeah, 10 years is a long time. One of the things, having been in the district two and a half decades, I've seen initiatives done, some well and some not. What I worry about with an approach that would be a massive all-at-once training is number one, the capacity with the group that we're partnering with, as well as our capacity to provide guest teachers for teachers to do the training, is not there and as a result, we would do it somewhat rashly. A longer sustained approach, I think, is something that would benefit the district. The idea is that in partnering with Oregon Center and in using a model that's employed in districts nearby that I've been able to experience a taste of, when you do it intentionally so that you have focused groups from each building going at different times, they go back and they become, they are the leaders in the work at the school that are then joined by other leaders over time so that the work is actually still being done at the school, so that that 10 years is not a time period in which you're waiting for the work to take place, it's the time period in which you're building the capacity of the work going on. I worry a little bit, having experienced professional development initiatives where our goal is to get as much as we can as quickly as we can, we end up sometimes approaching that from more of a checkbox approach, which has ended up having a detrimental impact because it's not as long-lasting versus a committed and sustained approach, which helps build not just capacity, but also build buy-in, to be quite honest. That this would start, we have a number of staff who have been waiting for a long time for this kind of training, so we would start intentionally with that staff, building the idea that this is both an opportunity and an expectation that staff participate in this and that they take it back and implement the learning that they've gotten from that. Oh, yeah. And it's not the only equity training we're doing. This David, this is for my ear. We would continue, and I'll just give an example. Myself and some of the Tosh's that I'm lucky to work with, we've been going around to schools of the requested building principles to engage in equity-related PD at staff meetings on PD days. So, the work is already being done on a local level. We're doing much of the work ourselves with folks who've been leading this work from a grassroots level. This is to both edify that work and also expand it so that those who need kind of the deep dive, that haven't had the opportunity to go into either a five-day intensive learning experience or a two-day in-district workshop, they'd be able to get that as well. But it's not something that would be the only efforts at equity training that we're doing. It would be alongside it and it would be foundational to that.
The only other piece I would add is, as we know that this is an opportunity for us both next year and three years from now to review this plan, I think as we evaluate the effectiveness of both the individual partner that we're looking for this as well as their capacity and our capacity, we're not locked into a 10-year timeline. Should capacity opportunities change or other training opportunities exist that can augment that and deliver it quicker to a willing audience, I think we are open to those conversations as we go forward.
I'm heartened by neighboring districts. I got to participate in one of North Blackness's Taking It Up trainings. That's a two-day seminar. One of the things they shared, they've been doing this work for 12 years. They're about half the size we are. They're at about 80% staff having completed the training because they had a slower start to it. This last year, they were able to report 100% graduation for their Black and African-American students. So, the slower, the longer, more intentional approach, I think, helps create buy-in as opposed to some staff, quite honestly, my fear is that you might have some staff, if we try to do it once, go say that they did it and then not take that work and own it back in their locations. Whereas if we're building the culture in Beaverton that this is the expectation, that we focus on equity in our professional development and we implement it in our work with students on a regular basis, I think that has a longer lasting impact.
Any other questions? Eric?
So, this is kind of like one of the first times you kind of got on offense when we get a lot of good headcount hires and talent in different areas. You kind of touched it a little bit, but what's the main strategy you have? Like when you realize you're not going to be able to fill one category you thought was important because you couldn't get enough people hired in time? And how do you prioritize that to the next needed or next key thing up on the priority order?
That's great, thank you. And as I mentioned, that really is where the question around the Tier Two strategy come to play and we hope to have to you by the end of the year a plan for how we would address that question, how we would go about prioritizing those Tier Two strategies, how we would decide at what point do you put pause on the Tier One strategy that it's too late in the year to continue to implement. You know, we will inevitably find ourselves on September 1 with quote-unquote dollars saved because people weren't hired up until that point. So, that's three months or, you know, every day that they're not hired, those are dollars saved that can then be accrued towards a Tier Two strategy. Again, no process for identifying that, but we will develop that and bring that back to you all for your review going forward.
Liam?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make some comments since I had the opportunity to sit on the committee and participate. Many of these comments have been shared tonight, but I just want to reiterate them from a board perspective and I believe my colleague Susan would agree with most, but she'll have her own comments maybe at a later point in the evening. But I just really feel our district made a great effort for robust outreach to our community and consequently, that brought us back into our committee work and we were able to have some really rich dialogue among all the different participants that were sitting around that table. And I watched the committee make changes based on the comments and the feedback that were being received all throughout the process. And I have to say, that's a hard thing to do. When you go in and you've got all this stuff to do within a short period of time. But to me, it was authentic engagement. Were we perfect? No. But we learned a whole lot and we really tried to be authentic in bringing that back and making changes throughout, I don't know how many reiterations we did of the draft plan. Everything was a draft. And though I would have loved to have been able to fund your $70 million, Danielle, we realized pretty quickly that $32 million doesn't go as far as we had hoped it would, but I'm not complaining. $32 million is still $32 million. I really felt we tried to come at it with an equity lens. Thank you, Toshika, for your work on that and Pat and others that really tried to reach out and bring and remind us constantly of that equity lens. And I thought it was good work, good listening, and good learning. I think we all learned something through this. And I really do look forward, like David on his slide about looking forward, continued community engagement. We learn a lot, we have a lot still to learn, but I do believe we've built some great relationships. I want to say finally in my comment, what a joy it was to be and is to be adding to our budget. I have been on this board for 11 years and we have cut and cut and cut. And we are actually going to get to add staff and services that will eventually benefit our kids and the kids that most deserve it. So, I'm just really pleased with this work and really look forward to what will happen as a result for great outcomes for you, John, and our targets. And anyway, what a great plan and I look forward to the future.
Superintendent?
Yeah, just to follow up on Susan's comments and David's comments, all of these school districts around Oregon, the number one issue they're trying to address is social emotional well-being of our students. And we know that that workforce is not out there, so we're going to be competing with each other. But one of the things that I think has come through this process has caused the district, and I see a couple of them sitting in the audience right now, that we have some talent within our own community that are doing some of this very work that we're not utilizing. And so, I think this can also be an opportunity if we're not able to get some of those Tier One strategies and/or to remember, this is just a small part of our budget, to start utilizing some of those folks that are offering those services that know the community and can help us move forward. So, you know, I'll just say, man talked about, you know, for 11 years we've been cutting, you know, sometimes if we possibly would have reached out in a better way, we could have brought those community folks in that could have helped us get through some tough times.
Any questions? With that, we thank you very much for your thorough presentation.
Susan wants to say something, remember?
I thought you said she wanted to say something.
And also then I came over and said she now wants to say something before we vote.
Fine, absolutely. I mean to say it now, it'd be great. I want to, as school board member, sorry I'm not there, but that was on the committee, I want to reiterate what Liam said. I'm very proud of the collaboration that was done by our community, by our union, by our administrators, the multiple meetings that happened. And I'm very excited about the potential for change in our district. I just wanted to thank everybody for their very, very hard work. It was done in seven months. It's very amazing and I appreciate all of it. Thank you.
All right, with that, we are going to take a 10-minute break and then I just want to let our community members know we're going to come back and we have two discussion items and then we're going to have a public hearing for those of you that signed up and you will have two minutes for the public hearing and then we'll have our action items. So, hold on a minute. This is for the afternoon. Thank you.
In fact, it even excludes them from potential class size relief by only air marking dollars for class size reduction for core classes. CTE classes and other electives are already experiencing extreme class sizes entering classes in the forties, computer science in the high fifties, photography in the fifties, etc. This is despite the SSA community feedback identifying increased access to electives as a major priority. Instead, we're now told to expect class size increases next year. I beg you to consider the equity of reducing only some class sizes. Your messaging very clearly that some classes are more important than others. We don't need just more adults in building, it's not enough. Our parents, teachers, and most importantly, our students all agree, we need smaller classes across the board. I urge you to rewrite this plan to be more fair.
Tyrone Henry, followed by Darrell Singleton.
Good evening. I'm Tyrone Henry, and I am a parent and also a volunteer. The Beaverton School District has an opportunity to embrace and define a new legacy for a new generation of diverse students, staff, and community. The Student Investment Act can help the district face these DEI challenges head-on, uplifting a new diverse generation by providing them with the confidence and emotional support they need to express their unique identities in society. When it comes to DEI, leadership and employees alike all seem to expect tangible results overnight. However, meaningful and sustainable change simply takes time. DEI is like a 401K. If you make investments early on and keep contributing, the savings will compound and grow. In other words, a lasting strategy will take time to develop and execute. In order to develop and execute meaningful results moving forward, the Students Investment Act is the 401K. In order to reflect our burgeoning minority student population, we will need to step up the minority hiring process. Research indicates that minority students do better contemporaneously in school and likely in life as well when they are exposed to teachers and administrators of their same race or ethnicity. Because our community has become more diverse, we need to create HR hiring strategies based on the operational realities which connect our communities and hiring people who look like the communities we're trying to reach. Bottom line, I'm grateful to be here and I'm grateful to hear all of the great things that the plan is moving forward with. Thank you.
Darrell Singleton, followed by Jody Monroe.
First, thank you. First, I want to commend you on all the work you've already done. Let me make sure, is that better? And recognize the amount of work and how hard this is going to be. Listening to the presentations already, I've changed some of the things I was going to come up here and talk about. One of the things I want to talk about specifically is around recruitment, hiring, retention of staff of color. Specifically, you know, we can sit here and talk about the outreach efforts, I could give more details about that. It sounds like there's some efforts being put into that. The thing I want to make sure folks recognize, you are going to be doing something brand new, and there are several other districts trying to do the same thing. The amount of staff out there of color may not be able to fill the need of all these different positions, all these different plans. Making sure you have a secondary plan and really clearly, and one of the things I want to make sure people hear me say today is being transparent and intentional on every step that you do. And when I do that, is many times you can talk about recruitment and hiring, the one they always seem to forgive is retention, okay? And that's where we talk about the intentional piece I want folks to really talk about, or hear me talk about today. For many of those staff, if you get your numbers, you have your target number, I doubt you'll reach that, but you may get a low number. The taxation that's going to happen on those staff of color coming into your buildings, you need to be prepared for. They're going to be looked at as champions to the kids. They're going to be looked at as champions to their allied peers. That weight is heavy on a person of color or a staff of color's shoulder. Based on my experience, twenty-five years working in school districts, working in culture-specific nonprofits, as well as government, I have watched that continue and continue to take our staff down. So, as you go, you have to be intentional in your next step of plans and have that included in your next set of discussions.
Jody, followed by Zedora Williams.
Hi all, thank you for being here and thank you for creating this plan and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to comment on this. I was excited to see some changes in the plan and this is my first time speaking publicly, so I'm super nervous. I am a parent in the district, I'm also a school district employee, I work at Beaverton High School, classified staff member. I am also married to a man who is undocumented and we have four biracial children in the district who are very connected in the Latino community in Beaverton. And coming into the school, working in the school, one of the things that I immediately saw was the disconnect. It was, it's very clear to me that there's such a huge disconnect between these families and the school. And I guess, I don't really propose to have all of the answers, but what I do know is that language is important, representation is important, and having staff of color is important. And I think that, as we all know, that that's a big job to do, but we have to do it, and we have to do it now. Our community can't wait anymore, and we can't wait anymore. We have to like, ask ourselves the hard questions about what are we missing, what don't we know, who can we engage and do the work? Because these kids can't wait anymore.
Thank you. Darrell Singleton, followed by Karen Ashikah.
Hello everyone, I am Zedora Williams and I am a licensed clinical social worker that provides therapy to primarily African-American children and families within Beaverton School District. So I'm here to stress the importance of mental health services being provided by an African-American clinician, even when you cannot get a full-time social worker contract with us. We are in the community. I will send you the list of all the African-Americans that we know of in this region, as well as some of our trainers that work specifically around racism, as well as definitely just being able to address every cause of anti-black racism that is leading a lot of our children to be depressed, anxious, or feeling suicidal in the school environment. So we need to be able to work and live up to those pillars of collaborating, as well as being innovative. Come on, Beaverton School District, we should be able to say, we did that, we met the black students' needs, mental health needs regarding the fact that we are a small percentage. And some may feel that we're not worth the dollars or the investment, but those of us in the community that are parents and that provide care for these kids, we will show up and we will do the work for our community and for our students because we want them to be willing to succeed. It is very, I think I almost, oh, okay. No, I think I just about almost covered everything. One of the things that I would like to say that will benefit from making sure to partner and involve African-American clinicians is it will reduce the mental health stigma, which providing that in the, providing a safe space within the school district could help kids significantly be able to achieve their academic goals, which will help close that achievement gap that we all care about, alright? Thank you.
Tyrone Henry, followed by Desiree Williams.
I'm Karen Ashikah, and I was looking over the response to the plan from the Black Student Parents Union. And suggestion one, improving the framing of the plan, I think is really essential. All of these staff people and the presence of helpful folks around students, if the students are there, their people are in the community, okay? They may not be teachers, they may not be social workers, but they are out there. And you may not be able to implement this in this round, but the option to reach out to the larger community through maybe city government, certainly the health department in the city to address this, some of this addiction issue, I mean, where are they? Addiction is a health issue. It's not something you get expelled for. I was astonished to hear this as a health professional. So, to outreach in many departments, whether it's a sports coach or a music teacher, this could be somebody's master guitar player, grandpa, you know, out there in the community. So, to look outside the academic qualification boxes, especially as you're filling these first positions, to bring the community in. And I would like you to think about doing that primarily in the other classes that kids take, maybe not so much of the core classes, but I know there has to be writers and poets and, you know, people in the arts out there. That's what we want to share with each other.
Thank you. Darrell Singleton, followed by Susan Elliott.
Thank you board members, thank you superintendent Ryan, thank you to all the staff who worked on developing the SIA proposal. I also want to thank the Beaverton Black Parent Union members that are here today, have also shown up, have been part of organizing throughout this entire process. We came here two months ago and spoke to you all and said, we're here for partnership. We want to partner with the Beaverton School District in order to see this place improve for our students. And so, we feel like this is the beginning of something great, and it's one step, one step forward. There's a lot more steps to go. And so, we would agree that a lot has been learned, we've learned a lot. It's clear from what has been written that a lot has been learned from the district as well. Something that we would like to see is an approach that's very strategic in addition to being responsive. So, what are the ways, thinking about what Pat had just mentioned around this ten-year plan, a strategic plan for cultural change and structural change? We're going to be looking for more of that. How does this district change culture, right? Education is a focal point of being able to change culture, right? So we want to continue to partner, and what we're looking at is really turning the corner towards implementation. This next year, the next four years, the next ten years, there's a lot of work to be done. And so, we want to partner with you on that. We want to actually help design and be part of those next steps with you and stay in conversation. So thank you again for all that work, thanks for the commitment. It's very clear, we've seen something different from the first plan to today, and just to see that growth has been amazing. So, we're going to continue to reach out, so just expect to see us, expect to hear us, and expect, yeah, for us to just keep showing up. So thank you.
Susan Elliott, followed by Denia Low.
The last time I was here, I was directed by Shoshigergo to speak for the Equity Pillars, so I'm so excited that we're here right now with this committee, which you guys presented was amazing, very impressive, that's a lot of work, so hats off to you. I've been watching, which you've been saying through emails, you're doing a fantastic job, you're saying all the right things. I'm working as, last year I had some time off, so I spent a lot of time at Southwood High School. I'm co-adviser with Adil Light in there. So I spent some talking to students during their seminar session, Black Student Union Kids. I also went to all the Black Student Unions in Beaverton School District, had a chance to listen to the students and what their concern was, that you've covered the piece about having curriculum, having teachers of color. But one piece that will come up as you guys are hiring so many teachers is a cultural competency piece. I'm part of the Black Parent Union group, and our concern was, what do you have as a scale for cultural competency? What are we looking at? And as issues arise, we'll pitch what you do to address that. I had a chance this last summer to be on a panel at Lewis L Clark with Jonathan Garcia, and he had this fantastic idea in his district, PPS, of having a student voice manager. I think it's important to have someone in a position that listens to students because we want to hear them and follow them, and let us test and see, are we meeting with their needs, what issues that arise as these students are dealing with, your curriculum and your teachers along the way. I look forward to working with you as well, we're so excited. And thank you for adding on the advisory committee, had a chance, two more seconds, had a chance to attend the class at BSCU, and this lady spoke to us about trauma training for teachers and students. There's so many resources that come across as education coaches and the CP, I'd love to help advise and give feedback and people resources that are out there to keep the good work out.
Tyrone Henry, followed by Sarah Joy.
Hi, my name is Denia Low and I'm a junior at Westwood High School. And I just want to say firstly that I am tired. I am tired, I'm tired, I'm tired. I'm tired of having years of not just me, of people I know, people that are part of my BSC, part of our leadership, part of our board, faculty members that are even here today, people that I know have stuck by our side through everything, just to be disappointed again, again, and again. I want to say that the improvements that you made to the act have been, it's been good, and I thank you for that. I just don't think that we are doing enough. And I know I can't say, oh, we should do this, this, and this, like so many things, because you can't get that all done in the time you have, especially with the limit of money you're getting. But pushing aside everything, everyone said there needs to be more black counselors, and yes, teachers, and yes, everything, but as a student, I know firsthand, going to school, feeling that fear, especially being a brown kid, like feeling that fear of going to school, like you're surrounded by white kids twenty-four seven, you hear stuff in the hallways all the time, and what do you do? You just have to act like you don't hear, because if you do, you have to go to an administrator. And who do you go to? Another white person. You never get to go to a black counselor, at least at my school. You never get to go to even a brown counselor, or someone that can be next to you and talk to you. And side note with the Tosar thing, that's just, to me, it sounds like white people teaching white teachers black culture, and teaching them out of white history books written by white people, and it's just again and again and again, seeing the same repetitiveness, but there's nothing to change that. So I think we should start not in the long run or this and that, but in the classroom itself with its teachers and its textbooks, and that can help the students now and later. Thank you.
Sarah, followed by Nicole DeGutt-Godaro.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Sarah Joy, I'm one of the five district social workers, and I come to you tonight to talk about gratitude, hope, and joy. My gratitude is that the state of Oregon finally, in my lifetime, is funding education. I'm Oregon-born and raised, went to public school, community college, and university, and it's exciting for me to see that our state is actually finally valuing our students. I've come here with hope that all of these supports we're talking about are going to help our students and our families feel connected to our district, feel connected to our schools, and feel supported. In the end run, I think that's what we all want, is that connection with people, and I think with all the more supports that we're giving, I think our schools will be able to reach out to our parents and connect with our youth. And then my joy is that I've been serving twelve schools for the last five years, and I love all twelve of my schools, but if there's a possibility that I could actually have more time in one building to where I can work on tier three, tier two, tier one, I can help with that parent engagement, I can reach out to community collaborators to make sure that there are people who look like our youth that are coming in, if we can't hire them, then I do want our community collaborators. I want more mentors, I want to be a part of that. And I'm so excited for the fact that I have this opportunity possibly to help our students just be part of a team, to work with my counselors, to work with my admin, and work with all of our teachers, just to help support our students feel comfortable and safe in our schools. Thank you.
Nicole, followed by Rita Morton.
Hi, my name is Nicole, Denia is my youngest daughter, I had one other child graduate already from Beaverton School District. I wanted to talk about the mental health aspect of the Student Investment Act. My son attended the Beaverton School District from third grade through graduation. He experienced racism, bullying constantly over that time, starting with death threats in third grade. And after the last presidential elections, kids came to school covered in Confederate flags and saying they were going to send him back to the cotton fields. My son was scared, and with no black counselors or teachers, he didn't know who he could trust. These are students that he had grown up with, and all of a sudden, he couldn't trust them, so he didn't think he could trust any of the teachers and counselors as well. He left, he ran home, and there was nothing I could say or do to make him feel safe again. My son's mental health took a nosive after that. There was counseling appointments, meds, hospitalizations, as well as multiple suicide attempts. Luckily, we were able to keep him alive through graduation. I'm happy to say that post-graduation, my son is doing much better. Outside of Beaverton School District, he had time to breathe. He didn't feel constant pressure all the time anymore. And I'm no longer afraid that my daughter will come home and find her brother's body. Adding more mental health providers alone is not enough to address the mental health needs of black students. Being a kid is hard enough, but it's even harder for students facing isolation, racism, and a lack of connection to their school communities. I agree that we need more mental health providers, but we need culturally specific providers. This is a systemic problem. If you really want to make a difference in the mental health of these students, we need to focus on less on fixing our students and more on improving Beaverton's education system.
You have a, you have a, followed by Susan Elliott.
Hi. Since two thousand, I've been a teacher in the BSD. I love teaching, I'm incredibly grateful to be a teacher. Even when exhausted to the point of extreme fatigue, I'm energized by student staff and the work. I've been incredibly proud to work for the Beaverton School District. I congratulate the district on much of the effort, this is not an easy task and much of the plan is exceptional. However, I am truly disappointed, disillusioned, and baffled by the lack of care and attention the district has given to our students experiencing homelessness. I implore you to act intentionally with humanity and dignity towards those experiencing homelessness. The SSA directly mandates money spent towards students experiencing homelessness, housing, insecurity, and poverty. The BSD has consistently had the highest number of students experiencing homelessness in the entire state of Oregon. Currently, the BSD has about eighteen hundred students experiencing homelessness. Since the SSA directs money towards homelessness and the BSD has the most in Oregon, how is there nothing in the SIA explicitly for homeless services? We need at least one more homeless liaison. Currently, the district has been operating with only two liaisons, a fraction of all of their districts, and putting them with an average of one liaison for every one thousand students. Students experiencing homelessness are our most vulnerable student based on every metric. The BSD is operating at a point of questionable moral educational malpractice. I know several in the community and even coworkers don't see students experiencing homelessness here in the BSD, they are here. They're in shelters, they're doubled up, in motels, in cars without shelter, and unaccompanied youth. There are about eighteen hundred currently in the BSD as of March. I was at VHS for years and just switched to MHS. There are students experiencing homelessness even at the fancy new school on the hill. Please, please stop by if you're not sure, I'll show you the club book space and provide you some details. They are incredible, they're resilient students that deserve much more than we're providing. They deserve what the SIA could and should provide. Please don't let students suffer from misunderstandings about what homelessness is according to the McKinney Dental Homeless Assistance Act. Please do not pass the SIA without proper support for students experiencing homelessness. I implore you to act intentionally with humanity and dignity towards those experiencing homelessness. Our most vulnerable population deserves what the state is asking for, please provide hope to those in need.
Jason Galbraith, followed by Justice Regis.
My name is Jason Galbraith, I teach computer science and engineering at Sunset High School. I'm the teacher that, rather than telling the students to put away their blasted phones, I teach them how to program them, and then I tell them to put away their blasted phones. I teach in a work-winning computer science program, which is one of the best in Oregon. I tell you this not to brag, but to provide a contrast for the level of support I receive from the Beaverton School District. My programming class sizes are in the fifties. I had one a few weeks ago that reached sixty students. I struggle to make sure I challenge students with language barriers or who are too shy to raise their hand. It is not fair to them and it is not equitable. And it's not just me, all of the high school electives are full of bursting. "Oh wait," says the imaginary voter, "what about Mission NDA for career technical education? You're being supported by that, right?" Unfortunately, that money only went to new programs and none of our strong improvement programs got money or support. This is in spite of the fact that CTE participants have a ninety-five percent graduation rate and CTE concentrators have a ninety-eight percent graduation rate regardless of race or income level. Hope we develop the Student Success Act, says the same imaginary voter, it's a lot of imagination in this talk. This piece of legislation was sold to the public as a way to keep electives and after-school programs funded. Under the current plan, my classes are going to go up again. Here's the good news, though, this problem is fixable. I'm a strong problem solver, which helps to make up for my overabundance of honesty. We do not need so many teachers on special assignment. We should probably cut some of the positions we have so those teachers can get back to engaging their students directly, and we certainly shouldn't add more. Second, we absolutely need more teachers added so that we can help all students see success. Even if you move money around to just fix my particular situation, that would just cost ceramics or photography to have classes of fifty students. You shouldn't increase the class size of any high school. I don't want to be the teacher that has to constantly shield my students from district decisions. I want to be the teacher that gives kids a great experience with the support of my district. Thank you.
Justice, followed by Sierra Gulick.
Ladies, I want to speak to two things, I'm trying to do it as fast as possible. On matters and issues that are critical to the success of our young people, volunteerism is great, our society depends on it, schools have often been the beneficiary of the volunteering of women, mostly mothers, and many of the care and emotional support services that schools eventually learned that they had to incorporate structurally. So roles within the SIA and also within the general fund that are critical should be funded and should be staffed and should be appropriately administered. As a person, it's been experienced in many different areas, in public and human services, from education to after-school programs to intervention services. If something is important, you put resources behind it. You staff people, you train them, you get people who can properly administer what they're doing, and also allow people to have the pride to document how well they did their job. Not just showing up to volunteer as a structurally inequitable practice, to count on someone who feels they have a moral obligation to show up and do something that's necessary for the young people in their building, in their district, in their area. It's great when people go above the line or do something that is impactful, but it is damaging in the long term because they will not be able to sustain it without support. Also, to close my own statements, something was said earlier that is something our kids experience often, which is the weaponization of their own idols. And what I'll say is this, and hopefully you can put the transcript together and figure it out, our kids are not deserving these things based on their character. They deserve these things because they're human. They deserve these things because we benefit from them getting quality education, getting the support they need to become adults that can lead and build our society, our community, our nation. It's not about their character, it's not about how they showed up one day, it's about who they are and our values. So please, put those two pieces of information together and remember that, because that's what our children experience regularly. Thank you.
Sierra, followed by Michelle Sorensen.
Sorry, texty with difficulties. Hello, my name is Sierra Gulick and I was diagnosed with dyslexia in second grade. I went to Finley Elementary for almost five years. At the time, when I was in second grade, I had no idea what dyslexia meant. My parents had to text test me because the school did not. I felt different, I couldn't read, the words blurred and swam around, looking backwards like something in the mirror. In my third grade class, I hid behind a bookshelf, had a chapter book on the outside and a picture book on the inside because I could not read. I was ashamed, my teacher in third grade did not give me homework. She thought that fixes it, but no, that doesn't help me, please help me learn how to read. Don't just push aside something that I don't know how to do, just help me. Don't just push aside something that I don't know how to do. Just help me. At this time, the learning specialists were helping me flip through flashcards of words like "is" or "was." This did not help me. I thought I would never go to college at that time. I told myself I was dumb, stupid. I hid in the closet at my house. I had no idea what was going on. Why couldn't I be normal? I felt horrible myself, all over one word, dyslexia, and the support that I was not getting. My parents made a choice. I needed help, help to read. I got a tutor. My parents had to set aside money for me to learn how to read because the school just stick with not providing it. And then, in all of fourth grade, I couldn't take it. I told myself I was dumb and stupid again and again. I transferred to a private school where I got the help I needed. No more flashcards. Some kids don't have this opportunity. They can't afford tutors, afford a private school. It's education's job to teach people how to read. Not my parents' money. It's the education's job. It is right to learn how to read. So please, 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 help kids like me, help kids who are struggling to hold a pencil with tighter shoes, to read the words. Help kids with their disabilities. Educate teachers about dyslexia and other disabilities. Thank you.
You have a Michelle Sorensen, followed by Nicole Bullock.
Hi. I am currently the counselor at Rock Creek Elementary. I was a teacher for 20 years. I've been a counselor for 17 years. And three of those years as a counselor, I was also an intervention specialist. So I can see our schools from many different lenses. I support the things that have been proposed in our Student Success Act and was part of the Behavioral and Mental Health Committee for the elementary level that gave some input and gathered some information from students, et cetera. I just want us to remember that when I looked at how my students will be helped, it was barely a drop in the bucket and breaks my heart. So I don't want us to forget, like, we are moving in the right direction. I'm so excited about that. But I don't want us to forget that this is barely a beginning for what my kids really need. And every day, I see what they need, and I can't meet the need, nor can the teachers and other staff in my building because it is so overwhelming. And we're running as fast as we can. Literally, people see me run down the hall. One of the things I'm especially concerned about, and I hope that the general budget will address this, is that being at a non-Title I school, we will only have a halftime intervention specialist, which is what we have this year. And that is not enough to meet the needs of our kids. And I don't know about you, but when I'm trying to do work that I have no clue how to do, like plumbing, my emotional regulation is not great. So that really does affect our kids, and they need that support. We also need the help of instructional assistance paras to help with behavioral support also. And we've had to pull two of our paras to work with kids to keep them safe. I saw that thin scene on the list for the Tier 2, and I'm like, please. I had to stand on the corner of 185th to try to block a kid from running into the street. No one should ever have to do that. And that's what happens when we don't have the support we need for our kiddos and a safe place for them to be.
You have a Nicole. Nicole. And the last one was Lori Howard. Oh, Nicole Gulick. That's your daughter. Nicole first, and then Lori's.
Hi, I'm Nicole Gulick, and I'm a parent of three girls and a mental health therapist in the community. And I'm here to thank you guys. The first draft of the SSA didn't include dyslexia, and now it does. So I wanted to thank those people who were involved in putting it on the draft and to hearing dyslexia, listening to it, and giving it a voice because for so long... And what's so hard about dyslexia is when kids feel alone, when they feel ignored, not because people want to ignore them, but because they don't know what their challenge is or they're not sure how to address it because they haven't been trained in teaching kids who have dyslexia. It's a very lonely experience. And so by giving it a voice, by giving it a line item in the SSA that really shows that it's being... That they matter. Truly, it shows that they matter, and we want to thank you for that. Moving forward in this process, what we want and what we're asking for is we want to continue to have an open dialogue and a system in place where we can talk back and forth, much like the Active Students Task Force that was in place, I don't know, three or four years ago. I was a part of that. It was a wonderful experience, involving the board, administrators, teachers, and students, members of the community. And we all came together on a regular basis over a two-year process to put in place programs and initiatives that help students move. And they do believe that we can do that again with reading, with low-income and students of color's reading rates at 34% to 37% at the third-grade level. We have to do something, and we have to do something differently. And we do believe that if we can get our voices and their voices at the table on this very important issue, if we can't learn to read, we can't succeed. Thank you very much.
Lori, you're the last one.
I'd like to thank the board and Super Ten for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight and the hard work that's gone into this. And thank you for including the $50,000 in the Dyslexia Community. When I look at the $500,000 going to culturally responsible library materials, I think of what good will that do if they are not able to read those materials? It says here in the draft, "Screening and subsequent identification of students with dyslexia difficulties." But it says, "Provide resources to support purchased materials and others for curricular needs for the implementation of requirements for increased screening and subsequent identification of students with dyslexia reading difficulties." It does not match. Curricular and requirements for screening and subsequent identification. It doesn't make sense. We're really hoping that this money can go to curriculum and training for teachers. I'm asking, I'm hoping that a parent dyslexia advocacy group can be included in the process of how this money is spent. The science of reading needs to be taken seriously. Whole reading and balanced literacy is not the way students learn to read. And reading scores show this. Lucy Coffins is not the way. Please don't throw more money at this program. It's not how children learn to read. It may be easy for teachers to use, and it may be cute, but it is not the science of reading, and that needs to be looked at. And it will help not only dyslexic students, but all students. And it will get rid of, or not get rid of, reduce that Tier 2 support for intervention teachers if we teach reading the right way. Thank you.
So sorry for just inserting myself, but we do have, through our multilingual department convenings of our diverse families, through the student investment account process, we do have a couple of parents that wanted to be here to share the process and how they were involved, but they just couldn't be here at 9 o'clock. So they did send in testimony through email that I just received. So thank you for allowing me to read it because I feel it's important that their voices are heard. So hello, my name is Galina Velashina. I'm from Ukraine. I have been a parent of children in the Beaverton School District for 22 years now. So when I was invited to participate in the community discussion, I was very excited. We came to the first meeting, and very soon, the staff realized that the room was too small for our group, and more parents were coming. We moved to the bigger room and started the conversation. Looking at all these parents who came to the first meeting brought me to the two conclusions. First, there are a lot of issues and problems that families want to address and hope to resolve. And second, the families do believe that their voices will be heard. The first conversation was very productive, and we came up with a list of problems that we wanted to address. At the following meetings, we met with other Beaverton communities, and it was very interesting to compare topics everyone wanted to discuss. Very soon, I realized that we have a lot of common concerns. The whole process of the community discussion was very open and transparent. All questions were answered, and we had enough time and means to come up with some solutions. I do support the proposed plan to the board. It does address a lot of issues that were discussed during our meetings. However, we need to remember that we still have more room for improvement. I appreciate the opportunity to be part of this process. I enjoyed it a lot and hope that we can improve our schools even more to give our kids the best environment and education possible. Thank you. And I was a parent from our Russian group. One more parent. My name is Madalise Finol. I am from Venezuela. I have two daughters, Barbara, 12 years old, attends Meadow Park Middle School, and Sarah, 15 years old, attends Westview High School. I've been here in the Beaverton School District for one year. Three calls were made several days in advance for meetings with parents. There were good logistics, offering snacks and childcare for young children, accommodating the best conditions to be able to perform the activities proposed without interruptions. I consider that it has been an arduous task that has been carried out for several months. Many hours of analysis by a large work team complemented with the opinions of parents and representatives. As a result, the best possible proposal was achieved, which I accept since I feel that the most important aspects for a multicultural student population were addressed and that their most urgent needs have been heard. Thank you so much.
We thank everyone for staying late for the public hearing, and thank you for your good comments. And at this time, we're going to return back to the discussion items, so we will not be taking a vote on the students at that till later in the agenda tonight. So with that, we will start with the Transcendental Transportation Supplemental Plan for 2021 with Mr. Beaver. And thank you very much. I know you get up very early to get to our most far and get all of our kids safely to school, and I thank you very much for staying with us so late tonight.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. So before you, we have the supplemental plan for the 2020-2021 school year. And just real quickly, as a reminder, this is addressed to reimbursement for students that live less than one mile for elementary, less than a mile and a half for secondary. It needs to be approved by the board for reimbursement by the state. And the primary reason for these issues are infrastructure, lack of infrastructure, mainly sidewalks, sidewalkways, that kind of thing. This year, there are nine changes. Already seven of them are regarding elementary schools and two regarding middle schools. Eight are proposed removals of transportation. There is one addition of transportation, and that was due to a transfer, a boundary change from El蒙纳卡 to Beaverakers that we recommend that we move over. That actually is for the addition of... It would be equivalent to two school buses. It's a very busy street, and they can't safely cross. Pardon me. The other... The removals are primarily due to infrastructure improvements, sidewalks for the most part, and in two cases, the completion of walk trails by THPRD. The net removals are three buses, equivalent to three buses removed. However, two buses will be added for those same elementary kids for the area we talked about. For the middle school, there amounts to about half a bus between the two schools. And just to let you know, we did this all in consultation with Washington County, with the Safe House of School folks, Beaverton Police Department, Washington County Sheriff's Department, City of Beaverton. We sent letters to every affected household, potentially affected household, excuse me. We spoke with each affected principal. And based on that feedback, we determined whether or not we needed to take that to community meetings for a larger audience. In one case, we did. In one case, that was at West TV. Based on that meeting, we in fact made a change to the original plan which we now present to you, which removed a portion of our area that we were intending to remove. But based on that parent feedback and further exploration, we agreed. We thought it was a blind curve, and we chose to pull it off. So we did make some changes there. So that's pretty much, without going through it, I'm sure you've had a chance to look at it, or you can. If you have any questions, we'd love to. If not, I'll be back next month to ask you for your... Hopefully a little earlier than I.
Are there any questions about the transportation plan? Thank you for the great work, and thank you for staying with us tonight.
Thank you for your support.
All right. Next up is the adoption of the Science Curriculum, Phase 2, or in secret. Yeah, safety in numbers, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Brian Seeca. I'm an administrator for curriculum instruction and assessment, mostly focusing on secondary schools. Caitlin Everett is here with me. She is our TOSA teacher on special assignment that led our commentary and led our project team to present to you the final report. This final report is presented from our project team. That project team was consisted of teachers, administrators, community members, students, and board members. If you remember from last year about this time, you accepted and voted to adopt Phase 1 of the report. And so just a reminder, Phase 1 gave you the position statement for K-12 science, the best practices for K-12 science, as well as the learning targets and materials for high school science. So Phase 2, that we're presenting for our first reading tonight, gives you the learning targets for kindergarten through eighth grade. In addition, it gives you specific learning targets for many of our specialized special education programs. We have materials for pre-K and kindergarten, materials for grades 1 through 5, and then another set of materials for grades 6 through 8. Included in that is our plan for professional development and an implementation timeline. And then in the appendices, you'll see just multiple resources that give context through giving you a program evaluation of science, the results of our pilot projects, as well as surveys related to the resources. It's a 100-page document. I'm sure you've seen a lot of it. We're happy to answer any questions now, answer any questions offline, and then we'll come back for a second reading at the April Board meeting.
Ken?
We've learned through staff experience that any curriculum adoption, really the success of it, has to do more around the professional development that accompanies it. And I would think especially with science, where teachers widely acknowledge, especially in the elementary levels, that they're just plain not doing it. So I'm just curious how it is that we are going to approach trying to change that culture of science at Beaverton. And it didn't exactly... Like, I know that's not exactly the same as choosing curriculum because I've seen the class kits, you know? I mean, like, I know we have them.
So we have a... We have a plan on a few fronts, especially in that the elementary level support teachers and being able to implement science. Firstly, is that initial professional development, which we're doing by unit and by grade level, so that in that professional development, they'll have exactly what they'll be teaching in front of them at their grade level, and one unit at a time. We're also going to space out the implementation so that teachers don't have to tackle everything at once and to add to their plate more gradually. The other component that we're really excited about with the instructional resource that we've chosen, which is called TWIG Science, is that it has really fabulous embedded professional development in the program. So for example, they have classroom videos of like real children and real teachers teaching the lessons. They have a really user-friendly interface that helps teachers see not just how to... what to do, but how to support their language... The language development of their students, how to differentiate and to engage students in that inquiry-based model of instruction. So I'm excited about, you know, that initial investment that we'll do with teachers teaching the units. But then also ongoing leadership at the district level and school level with some like extra training that will provide to science leaders at every building so that people have a point person to work with at their building level as well.
I guess now that we've had an opportunity, we had it in our work session. We looked at the data for students that are not achieving. And it kind of struck me, and that's why I'm bringing this up now, that we are failing our students of color. And so especially for third grade, fifth grade, et cetera. So it seems to me like we're just putting a whole bunch of things on our elementary school.
school teachers. They had to, they had the English Language Arts adoption, they have the math adoption, which we all agree they're having difficulty in understanding the concepts and teaching them to the students. And now we're going to go to the science. It seems like it's just too much considering they're not, whatever professional development they've gotten, it hasn't translated moving the dial for our students. So I don't know how you can respond to that, but that's a really big concern of mine.
So I would point you to a few things in the report. One of the things that we've done as an elementary team is really look into the experience of the child in the day. And making sure that all students have something in front of them in their day that they feel strong at, that they can engage in with all of their senses and hands-on is a really important thing so that science is a place that we can provide that to children, that they can have an experiment, that they can talk about and make sense of. And then maybe they'll pick up a book during reading time that connects to that learning to bring a time when, if a student, for example, is a struggling reader and if they don't have something else to do in their day that is not a struggle, that is fun for them, that they can feel good at. There's a lot of research that shows that that helps those students getting that content knowledge actually boost their reading because when you know about something, you can actually read at a higher level, grade level than your regular reading level on something that you don't know about. And so making sure that we don't get that content gap at the same time that we have a reading gap, if we don't address the content gap as well, then we won't be able to support those learners and making sure that they like going to school. There are several studies that show that when you implement a strong science program, that reading scores actually go up. And that's something that we're looking at in our instructional team is making sure that we integrate instruction across the student's day and so that when they're learning about and say they're growing their plants or they're hatching their butterflies in science time, they can read about that or use some math problems related to that. And then the other piece is that we do need to think about the day of the elementary teacher as well. And I really hear you saying that, and we hear it loud and clear from our teachers. And our team is working really hard to support our teachers in making sure that things are connected across their day and that they have a clear communication of how to implement that. And that's, so at the same time, we have instructional supports for students, creating more of those supports for teachers is definitely on our mind.
I just, I guess, just want to express my concern. I still am very much concerned because I just think there's just too much for the elementary school teachers to push out. And we're asking our students to be proficient. So if our teachers are not proficient, that's not going to help the student, doesn't translate into moving the dial for anyone. So that's what I'm really concerned about in moving forward with this adoption, considering we have the other two. And I guess I haven't quite heard yet, but again, we can take this offline, how this is really going to help.
No, and I'd have to answer it offline in more detail. I think the one thing to make sure we remember, kind of maybe just pragmatically speaking, is that like ideas like Division 22 requirements and making sure that we have, that we're responsive to the, to the state standards, which do include standards in science, you know, in elementary level as well as in the middle and high school level. So remembering that and then yet talking in detail about how we can better support our elementary teachers, I think is something that we wrestle with daily with our team.
Any questions?
I, a quick one. I asked Brian this over the weekend and I have a little bit more time to think about it. But I expressed to you under the middle school science, how we put another puzzle piece in place when we're still looking at the middle school scheduling and what that should look like. And when we look at these different hands-on sorts of things in books that have already taught, like in Eugene and some of our, the timeframe, I'm just wondering if we go forward to still look at a model when we don't know exactly what the middle school scheduling is going to look like. So I'm just asking, what comes first, the chicken or the egg?
With the, with the bean ten o'clock, I won't say my joke. So remember what we kind of have to do, right? That we don't get, we really don't get like a choice in teaching state standards, right? So what the adoption has to do is say, do we have the, you know, as we do the learning targets that our teacher required to report on, and then do we have the materials allowing them to teach those? So regardless of what schedule comes out, we now have to do that. What we think this adoption does, and to answer your question, I don't know which is the chicken or the egg in this case, but we hope that the decision makers around that middle school schedule will use this as like guidance, as kind of appropriate amount of time needed to teach science as the standards indicate it. Those next generation of science standards, which require that inquiry-based, hands-on way to do things, but like we chatted, the NGSS suggests around that sixty-minute timeframe. Not, we're not suggesting that to the second that is a must-have, but we hope that this adoption is, in depth as it was, can serve as guidance to what would, what would come out as a middle school schedule. What I think, you know, if, what we would have to do to come back to you to say we need to adjust this adoption would be kind of one of two things to happen. One, if the instructional minutes are just significantly different than that or what they are now. Or if there was some sort of like change in the number of, or change in the standard that you would want addressed by this adoption, like if you were to go to some sort of integrated model. Because this adoption, just at science. So to answer your question, I think we need to remember that, always remember that Division 22 idea, the real pragmatic approach to adoptions, and then the in-depth work that the cadre and project team has done, to use that work as guidance, as to make future decisions. So that would be my recommendation or answer.
Anything else? We appreciate you being here and I thank you so much for the information.
Can I just say one last thing?
You bet.
I just, again, I want to thank Kaitlyn and her team for the leadership. If you remember, last year, we had to pause our adoption and she was able to keep about twenty-five community members and teachers engaged in the process and a board member who might still be on the phone. And just, I'd just like to thank her for her leadership in this and being able to put together such a comprehensive plan. So thank you.
With that, we will be moving to action items. And the first thing up is the Student Investment Act approval. Would the team want to come back up or do you feel like everything has been sent?
Madam Chair, I would like to move that the board approve the proposed Student Investment Act plan as presented tonight.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the board approved the Student Investment Act approval. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to acknowledge that the plan is not perfect and that there is a large outpouring of support for the process, which I find very commendable to members of our district community, staff, as well as the community members who presented it. I was also really struck by the level of communication that we've had the last six months, I would say, is the most engaged from a whole community perspective on equity and with a particular focus on hiring. I know that that has been, those have been board priorities for a long time and I'm really excited to be able to see us start to take baby steps towards making progress on those issues.
Any other discussion? I have a comment from, that board member Collette prepared that he asked me to read and share with all of you, so I will do my best to convey his thoughts and his passion here. But with that, I want to thank the Beaverton community and community groups for all of the time and effort attending meetings throughout the fall and winter to give important input into this plan. A big thank you to the staff and members of the core committee for their hours of work putting this plan together. I appreciate the investments in our students' social and emotional learning, the focus on lower class sizes and more intervention and support in earlier grades, and emphasis on finding ways to reduce racial bias in our district through better staff training, an administrator to help improve our hiring practices, attract and retain more teachers of color, and a school staffing model that provides greater staffing where students need it the most. I've been hearing from a large number of teachers at title schools who have been concerned about the effect high class sizes have when combined with heavily impacted students and I'm hoping this plan will help some of our most vulnerable students. I also want to highlight staff's willingness to revise their initial plan to take into account feedback from a number of community groups. This input, I believe, has strengthened the plan. I also note this is an imperfect plan and more could be done to provide well-rounded education opportunities, which on the community survey was the top three priority for almost every single group. I believe with more time, we could have also strengthened the parts of the plan that focus on racial equity by providing more concrete goals and a finer honing of strategies and investments. While the plan before us is an imperfect plan, I will be voting yes on the plan tonight as I believe it is important that we move quickly to secure SIA funds and begin recruiting and hiring teachers as soon as possible. The demographics of our staff do not match the demographics of our students. They serve. With a large number of teachers and classified staff hired into this plan, I see an opportunity for us to bridge that gap and hire more racially and culturally diverse staff. However, I know many other districts will be receiving these same funds and they, and we don't, we need to move fast. The applicant pool we will be hiring from will decrease. One note on implementation. This plan was created through community input and that input should not stop with the approval of this plan. I would encourage the district to create a standing committee that can track the implementation of the plan and provide important input on the many details that sit below this plan. I hope the spirit of this plan, engaging the community to share decision-making power, becomes the new normal in the district as we move forward. I hope I gave you justice, Tom. Any other comments?
I too would like to just say just a few comments in my own, my own voice here. And then as first of all, I want to thank the community. These are folks that went down and testified and was part of a much larger plan to get the Student Success Act passed in the first place. I thank our teachers for putting things out there to follow their passion, this, how important this was to all teachers. I thank our businesses for stepping up and being a part of the commercial activities tax so that we have the funds to do this. This is a first step. This is a first step after a state for thirty years has not been funding public education properly. We cannot expect in one year with one implementation that we're going to turn everything around after thirty years of not funding public education properly. But it is an important first step, not only for our state, but definitely for the Beaverton School District. Does it answer every ill that we have? Absolutely not. As, who knows how many millions of dollars if we could fund every single thing to have every elective class, to have every student that is homeless and find the resources. But this is a first good step and I appreciate that our community worked with us and will continue to work with us because this is one year. What we're really going to be tested on is that we follow this plan and that we come back with some results. That's what, that would be the real, and I appreciate all of the staff, all of the community, the group that worked so hard to put this together in seven or eight months. And I know that there are other school districts that did not come close to putting community engagement in the thought process that what we, and again, I think we've said over, it's not perfect. We are not standing here tonight to say that this plan is perfect, but it is a very good, solid first step. And I am glad to be a part of a community that believes so strongly in taking that first step. And for that, I will be voting yes tonight.
With no further discussion, we will call a question. All those in favor of implementing the Student Investment Act for approval signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
So properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Board communication?
I thank the staff for being here so late because of the meeting and putting in a long week, especially on top of keeping our community safe with, on top of everything else, a coronavirus. So thank you very much for all your extra work. Super Tenth, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be a work session on Monday, April sixth, 2020, at three o'clock at William Walker Elementary.